Good morning, everyone. This, the Wednesday, October 4th, regular meeting of the NAGS Head Board of Commissioners is hereby called and ordered. If you will please join me in a few moments of silence. Now, if you'll stand as you're able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That brings us to the adoption of the agenda and a motion would be in order.
Is that moved?
Yes. I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That brings us to employee recognitions and we will start with Chief Hale on a new employee.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here before you today to introduce our newest officer to join the department, Davis Bradley. Davis was born in Elizabeth City and moved to Manio in 2012. He's a graduate of Manio High School and still resides in Manio today. Davis comes to us with two years' experience since he started his career in law enforcement with the Dare County Sheriff's Department. He is eager to learn and looks forward to a long career with our agency. In his off time, Davis loves to hunt, fish, stay active, and spend time with his family and friends. We're extremely excited to bring Davis into our family as his dad, Brian, was with our agency until he medically retired. We look forward to many years of service with Davis. And I will say that he got introduced to our family very well last night at our National Night Out. He was introduced to the department as our McGruff. So, all of our new officers getting the experience to be McGruff. And he officially joined our department last night as he was christened with that event. So, Davis, congratulations.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is another new employee and Planning Director Wyatt. I'll introduce him.
Hey there. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm excited to be here this morning to introduce you to Joe Costello. He's the new Deputy Planning Director for the Town's Planning Department. He brings with him a master's from VCU in urban and regional planning with a focus on GIS, which I think we're all very happy about and use those skills often. Prior to coming to NAGS Head, he was the planner for the town of Culpeper. Joe, his wife Nancy, their twin three-year-old girls, Audrey and Sage, and their Dalmatian Blue Tick Hound mix, Charlie, they're all settling in and very quickly integrating into the NAGS Head community. When Joe isn't chasing his twin girls around, he enjoys hiking, fishing, kayaking, playing strategy games like chess. But I get the feeling he's mostly chasing his twin girls around. In the month that Joe's been here, he's jumped right in. He's reviewed previous board meetings, minutes, trying to catch himself up on where we're at with all of our projects. Like I mentioned, he's been working on some GIS projects as well, doing some 3D modeling to help our planning board with some visuals with items they're working on. And I think you'll see him up here at the podium very soon. So, we're happy you're here, Joe.
Thank you. That brings us to our next item, which is another new employee, and Chief Wells.
Good morning, Mayor and distinguished Board of Commissioners. It is my pleasure to introduce our newest firefighter, Mr. Jose Ramirez. With eight years of experience in the field, Jose began his firefighting career at Rowan Oak Island Volunteer Fire Department. He spent the last five years as a dedicated member of the Duck Fire Department. He holds certificates as a firefighter one, two, as well as being certified as a North Carolina EMT. He is also an alumni of the Distinguished Breathing Equipment School. Currently, he is diligently working towards his associate's degree in fire science at the College of the Albemarle. Many of us already know Jose, having had the opportunity to work with him, beside him, and train with him. And we're really looking forward to working with him. Beyond his professional suits, Jose enjoys fishing and surfing and with his already impressive credentials in public safety, we're truly fortunate to have him join our team. Jose.
And that brings us to a recognition. Chief Wells.
Thank you again. I stand before you to present an outstanding individual who has demonstrated unwavering dedication to our community for an impressive 10 years. It is with great privilege that I bring before you for recognition, Trey Simmons. Lieutenant Simmons has been a steadfast presence within the NAGS Head Fire Rescue, embodying the essence of public safety, leadership, and compassion. Since joining NAGS Head Fire Rescue in 2013, he has steadily risen to the position of Fire Lieutenant, demonstrating a commitment to excellence and everything we can admire. Throughout his career, Lieutenant Simmons has shown commendable pursuit of personal and professional growth, always striving to improve his craft. His proficiency in firefighting and his exceptional leadership skills have earned him the respect of his colleagues and supervisors. Within our town, he is known for consistently going above and beyond. Beyond his role in the fire department, Trey's an active member of the town's team advocacy group and the town's safety committee. Lieutenant Simmons is a devoted family man. He resides in Kill Devil Hills with his wife Samantha and is the proud father of two daughters, Logan and Calla. Despite his many responsibilities, he always finds time to go and enjoy surf and beach with his family. Lieutenant Simmons currently embodies everything we want in a NAGS Head firefighter. He demonstrates courage, compassion, and commitment all of the time. Trey? Thank you.
That brings us to a proclamation for Fire Prevention Week. And Deputy Chief Height.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for this time to speak about our annual Fire Prevention Week open house. Fire Prevention Week begins Sunday, October 8th, and ends Saturday, October 14th. This year's theme is Cooking Safety Starts With You: Pay Attention to Prevention. For anyone who is not aware, Fire Prevention Week was started in 1922 by the National Fire Protection Association to commemorate the Great Chicago Fire of 1871, which resulted in over 300 fatalities and over 17 million in losses. Fire departments throughout the United States use Fire Prevention Week as a tool to educate our communities and provide an opportunity to visit fire stations and learn ways to prevent fires and injuries in their homes. Next week, your fire department will be providing education to the elementary schools in Dare County and will host our very own open house on Thursday, October 12th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. I would like to thank each of our staff for working hard to prepare for our event and offer our special thanks to public services for helping to get the station looking great. I would like to invite each of you and our community to come and spend some time with us next Thursday. We will have educational materials, refreshments, and planning for adults and kids to do. And my understanding is that Smokey the Bear is probably going to show up, possibly a little guy named Pluggy that's a fire hydrant that runs around. We'll have an agility test for kids to do. Adults and kids will be able to spray a fire hose, and most importantly, you'll be able to meet our fire staff. Thank you, and we look forward to seeing each of you.
Thank you, sir. And we also have a proclamation that I will read into the record for the board's approval. Whereas the town of NAGS Head is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all of those living in and visiting our town, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires killed more than 2,800 people in the United States in 2021, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and whereas two of every five home fires start in the kitchen, with 31% of these fires resulting from unattended cooking, and whereas more than half of reported non-fatal home cooking fire injuries occurred when the victims tried to fight the fire themselves, and whereas North Carolina's residents should turn pot handles toward the back of the stove, always keep a lid nearby when cooking, keep a three-foot kid-free zone around the stove, oven, and other items that could get hot, and set a timer to remind them that they are cooking, and whereas residents who have planned and practiced home fire escape plan are more prepared and therefore more likely to survive a fire, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires almost in half, and whereas the 2023 Fire Prevention Week theme, Cooking Safety Starts With You: Pay Attention to Fire Prevention, effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Ben Cahoon, Mayor of the Town of NAGS Head, do hereby proclaim October 8th through 14, 2023, as Fire Prevention Week, and I urge all of the people in the town of NAGS Head to check their kitchens for fire hazards, use safe cooking practices, and support the many public safety activities and efforts of the NAGS Head Fire Department. All town residents and visitors are invited to attend the annual NAGS Head Fire Rescue Open House, held at the Douglas A. Ramali Fire Station 16 on Thursday, October 12th, 2023, from 5:00 to 7:30 p.m., this being the fourth day of October 2023. Having heard the proclamation, a motion to adopt would be in order.
Is that moved?
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Height. That brings us to public comment, and I will turn it over to Mr. Leidy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Each month, the Board of Commissioners welcomes members of the public to provide public comment. This is not an opportunity for dialogue, and the board rarely responds to public comment. But anybody who wishes to provide public comment, if you will please come to the podium, start by telling us your name and where you live, and then address your remarks to the board as a whole. Also, if you are here to provide comment on the public hearing, which is scheduled for this morning, you can reserve your comments until then. So, and I will also let you know when your five minutes is about up. Yes, sir?
Good morning. David Bragg, NAGS Head. I'm here to discuss Section 24.8 of this North Carolina state budget. It seems that it's very detrimental to citizens of this Dare County, since we're the only people that will have this happen to us, not have representation of what would happen with affordable housing. To that end, I went to the meeting for the Board of Commissioners for Dare County yesterday, and I consider myself a pretty good researcher. I do my due diligence before I go to a meeting to speak, and I was blindsided yesterday. I spoke, and then when I sat down, Mr. Woodard told me I should do my homework because I addressed him and his cohort coming here to speak. Well, I got an email back from him because I can't let things die. So, he said he spoke to our mayor at least six times, and the mayor assured him that the board was on board with affordable housing being built right down the street. So, I don't know how that could happen because I always thought an elected official represents the residents, and the board also represents the residents. So, how could you assure that without having public comment and cooperation or buy-in from the board? I'm just wondering, what hat were you wearing? Did you meet with Wuda Cooper prior to those meetings? Do you have a contract with Wuda Cooper with your architectural firm? Let me give you an idea of what conflict of interest is. A conflict between the private interest and the official responsibility of a person in a position of trust. Well, at this point, I find it hard to trust someone that is doing things outside the scope of his being mayor. You were not elected king, you were elected mayor. Kings do that. They make the decisions for their people. You don't. It comes to the residents and to the board. Secondly, I'm ashamed of politics lately. Both parties, and I'm a staunch Republican, I see the President of the country and his family taking millions of dollars. I see a representative from New Jersey getting gold bars of Mercedes and cash from Egypt to get things passed. Now, I see our own mayor meeting, or I will say I assumed he met with Wuda Cooper. I know that one meeting, you had to not be here because I assumed that was because you had met with Wuda Cooper. So, in the future, you know, due to a lack of trust that I personally have, I don't think you should be on this task force for affordable housing in NAGS Head because I can't be sure if you are going to be representing NAGS Head or your firm. Because it's very hard, as I can see with all these other politicians, might have to come out of retirement to become a politician because the way I'm looking at it, they're doing a heck of a lot better than I am as retired. Because as a politician, as the people I named, they got money coming in one hand from the government, and then another pot of money coming from another entity that they happen to be able to represent or get things passed, and they get money from that area. So, I'd be real happy, but I have a little bit more integrity than that. I won't be doing that. And I think anyone that's mayor should have no conflict of interest. You should not be representing your company with anything that has to do with you having a decision that you could make to have that company get a contract. I'm questioning whether you had the first letter out because of that, because when you lose your influence as mayor, then you lose the influence that you could have to sway people to vote for or against anything that may affect your livelihood. So, I just think it would be great if you came out and made a public statement of whether you met with Wuda Cooper and your company had any involvement, and if you're going to have any involvement in future affordable housing, like with the housing, I believe, that's going to be going in Kitty Hawk. That's a $35 million contract. This was a $12.5 million contract. We're talking a lot of money here. And when that money becomes available, and there is a possibility that a company could get a cut of that pie, it seems like all integrity goes by the wayside. So, I'd love to have your comment on that. I know that you don't comment at these, but it would be nice if you put something out to the citizens of NAGS Head. Thank you.
Mr. Bragg, that's okay. Thank you. That's five minutes. Thank you, sir.
Good morning. My name is Basil Belches. My wife and I are residents of NAGS Head. Along with quite a few other Dare County residents attended and spoke at the Dare Board Commissioners Meeting that Mr. Bragg mentioned this past Monday, we all spoke against the legislation in the state budget that allows any affordable housing development, but Dare County can be exempt from municipal planning and zoning regulations. There was plenty of back and forth and a few sparks. Where this legislation originated from was not cleared up. However, during the public comment and during an update on the county's workforce housing efforts, Dare Chairman Woodard and County Manager Alton both stated that the county would never jam something down the town's throats or go against ordinance. That's pretty close to a direct quote. The board also discussed establishing a task force to work on the affordable housing issues, including town managers, elected officials, and planning department folks from each town. That sounds good, and while I recognize too many members on a task force can be detrimental, I think it'd be beneficial to have a broader cross-section of the county on this task force, maybe some citizens and business owners. So, I'd like to request our town Board of Commissioners to consider broadening the task force membership and for our board to encourage the county and other towns to do the same. If you're looking for a local citizen to serve on the task force, I'd happily volunteer my time. Thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Belches.
Hey, I was also at a Dare County meeting. Before I start...
I'm sorry. What's your name, ma'am?
Oh, I'm sorry. Debbie Carrera.
Thank you.
From NAGS Head. Before I start, I've been to three meetings in a week. It's incredibly time-consuming. It's time-consuming to get here, to be prepared, and to sit through it. And I personally, regardless if I agree with everything that you're doing or not, I appreciate your time because I don't think that this is an easy task, and perhaps right now you haven't been appreciated enough, but I do think that it should be recognized. Two things that I'd like to bring up. One, I agree with Basil. It would be nice to have some laymen or some regular citizens. At the meeting, they discussed having people who were holding office or planners. I think it'd be nice to consider somebody who is a layman, who maybe has some expertise or passion, but doesn't hold office. And the second thing, and this may not be the right form to bring up, I think we've seen that these legislators have not represented Dare County. I've sent several emails and I've called. Nobody remembers anything. I got a note back from Goodwin's office yesterday who said they only represent a small portion of Dare County, which is still Dare County. What I'd like to see us consider, and leadership is likely in this room, is preparing for these reelection campaigns and having somebody from Dare County. It feels like the tail is wagging the dog. We have the money. We have the resources. We should represent in Raleigh. Just something to consider. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Carrera.
Hi, my name is Shelley Blackstone from NAGS Head. I agree with Debbie and Basil that the task force should have a broader representation of people from the community who are affected, workers, employers, property owners, et cetera. It doesn't seem to be a comprehensive plan. It's just a reaction to some HUD money and all the restrictions that go with it. And it really seems to me like it needs to be part of the broader development plan. Just my opinion is we have pretty much maxed out our capacity to develop already, but if we're going to continue to develop and, you know, bring in Target and, you know, build hotels and all these things, that along with that should be a commitment from that new entity for workforce housing. We just keep making the problem worse without any, you know, broad, comprehensive solution to integrating workers, you know, into the community. One of the comments at the Dare meeting on Monday was that, you know, we keep putting high-end projects in front of, you know, thinking about workforce housing or affordable housing, and so there just doesn't seem to be a lot of balance, and it's everybody's problem. I think it's great for all the towns to get together on this task force and talk to each other, you know, because when somebody brings in Target, that affects all the other towns. I mean, you know, when you build a hotel, that affects all the other towns because of the need for the workforce. Because that increases the need for the workforce. So, and the other thing is, is that even though Dare said that they would not, you know, force the towns to, that they would, I don't remember the exact words, but what they didn't do was they denied that they had anything to do with this legislation that removed the rights of the towns to do their own zoning when it comes to affordable housing. But they didn't actually say, they kind of skirted the issue, that they would issue any kind of correction. There's a process, apparently, for issuing a correction to the budget and for Dare to come forward and say, hey, we didn't ask for this. This is wrong. You know, this is not what we asked for. Please take it out of the budget. I didn't hear that. So, I think we need to continue to pursue that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment to the board?
Good morning. I'm Molly Harrison. Live on Lakeside Street in NAGS Head. And I'm here representing a lot of neighbors who couldn't be here because of work, but we are concerned about the hotel that's coming into the street. I'm aware that it is perfectly checking all the boxes and it's going to happen. It's legal in the town. The only thing we're concerned about, not the only thing, but one of the things we're concerned about is the traffic flow on Lakeside Street. The entrance and the exit to that hotel, 90-room hotel, are on a small side street in NAGS Head. It is, in our opinion, very unfair to our neighborhood to have to wait for all that hotel traffic to come in and out, as well as the gas station traffic that's coming in and out of that site. I mean, on our little tiny street, we have 25 neighbors that live back there, or 25 households. It's just, it's not going to work. The hotel does not have food on-site. The hotel does not have food on-site. The hotel doesn't really have any services on-site. So, everyone is going to be getting in their car and leaving that hotel several times a day and coming back to that hotel several times a day. The only things that people could walk to would be maybe the go-carts. They could walk to the event sites. That will have some foot traffic there, but pretty much everything else is going to be jumping in your car and driving away, even to the beach. You can't get across the street safely to walk to the beach from that site. So, this is really going to back up our neighborhood. I know, you know, I'm on the planning board, I'm not representing the planning board today, but since I was at the planning board meeting, I know that DOT has said they will not put a light there. I get it. I don't really want more lights either, but it's going to be a big cluster there of cars coming from all directions trying to get in and out. Unsafe for pedestrians. So, I just, I don't know what the solution is. I hope that the board could maybe consider looking at an access from the bypass, which I know isn't ideal either, but, you know, it's not going to work on Lakeside Street to have all these cars coming in and out on our small street. Yeah. So, I hope the board will discuss, maybe look at the sight line carefully and see how, if there's any solution for our street. If not, then I would hope that the board could at least maybe help us get a light there or a crosswalk or something so that it's just not completely jammed up there all the time. I mean, I think you use the gas station in the summer, and I'm not speaking all year round, but in the summer, a lot of boats and trailers are coming into that gas station. A lot of traffic is coming in. So, if you're coming out of our street and you want to turn left, there's traffic coming in all directions. It's not just a simple left turn, which no left turn is simple, but there's people coming from across the street, there's people coming from Forbes, there's people coming from the south, the north, there's people coming in and out of the gas station. It's very dangerous. I have a 16-year-old driver. She's just starting to drive. I'm not really looking forward to her having to get caught up in all that. That's worse than we have now. Another thing that, just since we're talking affordable housing, this hotel, I don't know who's going to work there. We need places for these people to live, and I know the board is carefully considering all the options. I hope that you really keep in mind that as we bring in more development, we need more places for people to live. And, you know, I know that I really like the suggestion of getting more people on the board who are on the task force, who are representatives of the community, not just elected officials. So, I know I talk fast. I think that's everything I wanted to say. I just hope that the board will just consider our neighborhood when you're looking at the sight line today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Thank you, Ms. Harrison.
The golf course is for sale for twenty million. People probably were already through it.
Does anyone else wish to address the board? If not, at this time we will conclude the public comment session.
Thank you, Mr. Leidy. That brings us to the consent agenda, item E, and a motion would be in order.
So moved.
A motion, is there a second? Have a motion and a second to approve, approve the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. That brings us to public hearings, and it goes back to you, Mr. Leidy.
All right, thank you again, Mr. Mayor. Uh, at this time, we will begin the public hearing to consider, uh, text amendments as it relates to uses of pawn shop, pawn broker, scrap dealers, and precious metal dealers. Um, this is a legislative hearing, uh, so therefore those who present information do not have to be sworn, but we will begin, uh, the hearing by receiving the staff's analysis presented by the, uh, planning director, Kelly Wyatt.
Thank you, good morning. Um, I'm going to just get the staff report pulled up here, so that we can all- Um, yes, as you noted, um, I'm here this morning to discuss the consideration of text amendments as it relates to the uses of pawn shop, pawn broker, scrap dealers, and precious metal dealers. Um, we discussed this, staff discussed this with the, uh, board of commissioners at their September sixth meeting, um, and at that time, staff was given, um, some guidance to move forward with how we handle specifically the item of precious metals dealers. Um, at that meeting, what staff came away with is that we wanted to, uh, specify that retail jewelry shops are permitted to not only sell jewelry and similar items, um, but also to engage in the appraisal, purchase, and repair of jewelry and similar items, um, to allow retail jewelry shops, um, and precious metal dealers, uh, to allow a precious metal dealer to operate as an accessory use within an existing, um, jewelry shop, and to expressly prohibit pawn shops and pawn brokers within the town. Um, so what staff has done is provided a draft ordinance for your review that we believe addresses all of these items. Um, in addition, we provided, uh, amendments, not to the UDO, but to the Town Code in general, um, as it relates to Chapter twelve, as it relates to business licensing. It's in that section that we've incorporated the details, outlined in the permitting, uh, in the North Carolina General Statute, Section sixty-six, Article forty-five, um, Part two, speaks specifically to, um, precious metals dealers. Before I go into the details of the draft ordinance, I did want to note, um, that jeweler Missal Kowalski, um, and an attorney for National Rarities, Mr. Stephen Rowine, were in attendance at the planning board's meeting for the metals September nineteenth. Um, they did address the board. Uh, at that time, Ms. Kowalski informed the planning board, um, that National Rarities, the company that she's, uh, looking to host, uh, to be part of, uh, a temporary event within her shop, not only deals in precious metals, um, but they, uh, they also appraise and potentially purchase other items, um, such as collectible cards, stamps, antiques, anything of that nature. She was concerned that this amendment did not encapsulate those items as well. So it was at that time, um, that staff noted, uh, drafting an ordinance that would allow the appraisal and purchase of, uh, that larger array of goods was not incorporated into this ordinance, one, because that's not what staff felt the direction was from this board, but two, once you get beyond precious metals, um, you're really looking more like a pawn shop, once you get beyond jewelry and things of that nature, where you're dealing with, um, autographed cards, memorabilia stamps, things like that. So, uh, that was not specifically included in here. Um, beyond that, uh, Mr. Rowine also spoke with the planning board, um, and let them know that he was, um, I guess questioning the portion of the drafted ordinance that would require that they receive approval for, um, having that temporary event within the jewelry shop. Uh, staff explained at the time that that was included to accomplish two things, uh, not being overly burdensome by requiring the issuance of the formal zoning permit, it would give us a mechanism to ensure that it was temporary, and we specified temporary as ninety days, but it would give us a mechanism to know what the amount of days actually was, and also give us an opportunity to make sure that we're keeping the items that are being purchased, um, within the realm of what you can purchase through precious metals, um, and not items beyond that. Uh, at their September nineteenth meeting, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend adoption of the ordinance amendment as it was proposed, um, including keeping the language in there regarding the approval, um, of the dates for which the event was to be held as a mechanism to ensure compliance from the staff's behalf. Um, I'll go through this amendment very quickly. Um, we proposed, uh, changes to Section six point five, six point three. This lists the uses that are expressly prohibitive within the town. You can see if you haven't read there, pawn shops, pawn brokers, cash converters, and scrap dealers. Moving down to Section six point six, um, we had a retail category that just specified jewelry generally, um, so we went ahead and marked that out and created a new heading, um, or a new item rather, for jewelry shops, or retail set, um, category, that states jewelry in the incidental appraisal, purchase, repair, and service of goods on the premise. And we got that as a permitted use, um, supplemental regulation, just as it was permitted, um, as general retail. Then moving down, uh, we've added some language, uh, Section seven point sixteen, jewelry shop. Um, this states that, uh, retail jewelry shop, shop would be permitted in accordance with the table, Section six point six, um, with the conditions noted, one being that existing regular jewelry shops may elect to host temporary events whereby precious metal dealers operate within the existing business as an accessory use to the principal use of retail. Um, no existing jewelry shop may hold such an event for more than ninety days combined in any calendar year. It is the responsibility of the jewelry shop to notify and seek approval from the planning and development department for each event, and that precious metals dealers shall adhere to all licensing permitting requirements as set forth, um, not only in Chapter twelve of Airtown Code, businesses and licensing, um, but obviously for the statutory requirements of Section sixty-six, Article forty-five, Part two. Um, that was the changes that we've made, um, in the draft ordinance that, that hopefully, um, addressed what we heard the board of commissioners, um, express at their September meeting, and would allow Ms. Kowalski to proceed with her amendment as we begin. That's all I have.
All right, any questions for Ms. Wyatt? All right, thank you, Kelly. But does the applicant wish to present any information about this application? Yes, ma'am?
Hello?
Yes, please. If you'll go to the podium and tell us who you are, and then, uh, speak into the microphone so we can make a record.
The problem child. Jewelry by Dale. The one comment from Ms. Wyatt, um, and I understand how you would draw the correlation between items other than precious metals that these companies may purchase to feeling more like a pawn shop, but let me explain that a little. You know, of course, a pawn shop is somebody bringing an item that they hope they can retrieve, and that's not what this is all about at all. We have had many, many customers over the last ten, twelve years we've done this, that have asked, can we bring things other than precious metals, jewelry, silver? And the other company that I have done this with, they don't, they don't buy other stuff. National Rarities does, and that's what appealed to me, because we've had so many requests. People, uh, down here, there's a lot of retired people, there's people that wish to downsize and simplify their lives, so collections they've had, um, I mean, or paintings they've had, or artwork, or baseball cards, you know, stamp collections, whatever it happens to be, they're at a point where they, they, they want to sell it. They don't want to go to a pawn shop. Um, it is perceived that they cannot get a fair deal, and the two companies that I've worked with in this realm, that, that's the one thing I liked so much about them, they offer a very fair deal. It's, it's significantly more than what a pawn shop offers to pay, and it, they're not pawn it, and it's not where they expect you to come back and however many days or months to retrieve the item and buy it back. Um, they, these people want to sell these items, divest themselves of it, and move on, having an empty closet. Um, to me, the precious metals, that's where the most value is held, um, because we all know roughly the price of gold, two thousand or more, sometimes less, but per ounce, um, and that's truly the item that most criminals are interested in. It's easy to move, it, it's easy to send it through the nefarious pipeline they may have established. I'm not part of that pipeline, they don't come to me for, for that sort of thing. And the other items typically, typically don't hold the kind of value that precious metals do. And in my viewpoint, I think you've come up with a good regulation for precious metals as an accessory use to a jewelry business, and that is, to me, the most important item for resale that these dealers may purchase. That's the most important to cover, because that holds the most risk for something illegal coming off. And I think this really addresses that, but the other items, they, they don't hold that typically, they don't hold, I mean, yeah, you can have a baseball card worth a million dollars, but they're, they're not, um, that's not typical, so ethically, they don't hold the, uh, the value of precious metals, and I think, I think this ordinance could absolutely encompass those other types of items very safely. Um, it, to me, it makes perfect sense, it seems to simplify the situation, because what I'm doing, what these companies intend to do, has nothing to do with pawn. Um, it does encompass other items that somebody might go to a pawn shop to get money for, but it is not the same process. These people offer very fair, they know their, they know their information, um, they, they know what to offer, and it's much better than pawn prices, and they don't have to try to go back and pick it up again, because they don't want it anymore. So, that, that's my opinion on that. I think it would be very expedient and makes sense to me to, to wrap all those things together, with the precious metals being the most, um, important of those items, because, oh, the identity involved are precious metals. So, yes, I don't know, I don't, I, I, that's the only way I know how to explain it. I'm not sure if I'm making a lot of sense, but it, it's a very, very different procedure than pawn, and it, it sounds and feels like it's similar or the same, but it, it's very, very different, it's night and day. And it really, I've, we've had so, I think I said this before, we've had so many people that come to these events that thank us for the public, they feel it's a public service, because they, they don't, either don't want it, do the internet way of doing things, or they don't understand how to do it, which I'm one of those. Um, and this gives another avenue that's separate from pawn, that's quite legitimate. Um, so, if you all have any questions for me, I'll try to answer them.
All right, thank you, Ms. Kowalski. Does the board have any questions for Ms. Kowalski? No? All right. Anything else, ma'am? Did you have a question?
Right there, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all for this consideration.
All right, at this time, does any member of the public wish to comment on this proposed, um, set of text amendments? If so, this is your opportunity. Anything from the planning board on this? Wish to comment? All right, at this time, uh, does the board wish to receive any other information about this proposed text amendment before you begin your deliberations?
I'd like to ask Kelly a question.
All right, if you have a question, Ms. Wyatt, if you could, uh, answer some additional questions, please.
Thank you for the presentation. Having someone, having personally experienced pawn shops through my previous, uh, employment quite a bit, not only to the town to our north, but in other, uh, areas, including other areas out of state, we can certainly agree that Ms. Kowalski's jewelry shop is certainly different than a pawn shop.
Without a doubt.
Is there any, if the proposed ordinance would be to amend it, to accept rare items such as a Michael Jordan rookie card or other items? That's not, that's, that's not one go-to-a-pawn-shop. Are we, is the town opening themselves up for the possibility of a jewelry store coming in that could actually be a pawn shop?
I feel like the mechanism for staff to be able to enforce the items coming through, and, you know, a Michael Jordan card is okay, but something else isn't. It, I would have a concern about how we delineate what's acceptable and what isn't, what constitutes rare, who makes that determination. Um, I will say that I have every ounce of faith that Ms. Kowalski's, um, vision of what she wants to do would work perfectly, and from an enforcement standpoint, we would probably never hear a thing about it. The concern is that it's not just for Ms. Kowalski and National Rarities. It would be a text amendment for all jewelry shops within the town, and they may elect to use an organization, um, that's, that's not National Rarities, and our ability to enforce it once that happens diminishes. So, I'm happy to go back and take a look at this, if that's the board's desire.
But what you're saying is, there is a concern then, from staff's standpoint, that certainly, we know that people's not going to be pawnin' skill saws at our jewelry store, that another location could come in and take advantage of, well, a change in this proposal. Is that, is that safe?
As, as staff, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Kelly, what's the difference between this and a thrift shop? What's your, a pawn shop and a thrift shop? Because currently, we have people that are buying and selling things to thrift shops every day.
Sure. Um, I hope I can answer this question appropriately. So, the thrift shops that we have in town are consignment shops, essentially, um, I mean hotline, things of that nature. Things are dropped off, I guess sometimes there's a value assigned for a tax write-off, should they wish to do that. Um, there's a thrift store that operates predominantly consignment, so those items just fall under our general retail. Um, a pawn shop, people are going to be bringing in their items, the item will be appraised, the value- The item will be appraised, a value assigned to it, and that value provided to that person a cash check, et cetera, whatever. There's no, to my knowledge, there's no mechanism. The North Carolina general statutes don't regulate consignment shops or thrift shops through any type of special permitting via law enforcement, whereas they do at pawn shops. I just believe there's a difference between what I heard about a thrift store or a consignment and you versus what's occurring here.
Any other questions for Ms. Wyatt? All right, does the board need any other information before we close the public hearing? All right, at this time, we will conclude the public hearing and the board may begin its deliberations on these proposed amendments.
Anybody want to start in terms of comment or putting, putting forth a motion? You know, I'll say, I, I sent some interest in finding a way to permit the other items. And, you know, my, my personal sense is that, you know, one of the, one of the big differences here between what's being proposed and, or what could be proposed in a pawn shop is the temporary nature of this, that this is something that a jewelry store that's in business properly as a jewelry store can only do this for a limited period of time. So it's not, even if you, even if you have some concern about the items, you know, again, it's, it's, it's a temporary basis. So anybody's thoughts about a motion?
I'll make a motion. Make a motion that we adopt the ordinance amended to town code, U D O ordinance of the town in access as it pertains to the uses of pawn shop, pawn broker, and precious metal dealers as presented.
Is there a second?
A second, the motion is for sake of starting the conversation.
Okay, thank you. It seems as though, you know, if, if there was interest that, that there needs to be some wordsmithing, I also suspect that the applicant has interest in proceeding with some events and would benefit even from the ordinance as it's drafted. So I would say my personal inclination would be to say that I would, I'd be inclined to vote for it as it is, but ask if we could revisit expansion of the language from precious metals only to other items and if we could find language and find a way to do that.
I would be okay with that.
And I, my comments are not slight to the planning board or to planning staff. I appreciate the work that you've done. And I too would be okay if we could go back to revisit it. Because I think that, being that it's limited in nature about the timeframe, that may be helpful. I just don't want town, town staff to, they telling us, hey, we worry about this and then we allow it and something comes in. I don't want that. But I also see where they're coming from, where stuff that they're going to be selling other than precious metals, they're not going to take it to a pawn shop.
Right.
They're just not going to get what they're looking for.
I think understanding the issue, there has to be a way to, to craft language that staff can use for enforcement that accurately describes, you know, the kind of items that we're, that we're talking about.
And I think the time, the timeframe is what, the 90-day timeframe in any calendar year.
Right.
It's what allowed me to make the motion.
Thank you. Mr. Seers?
I agree with those. Everybody would state it, I agree with.
Okay, all right. Then we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the ordinance that we have before us. And I will, and I sense direction to the staff to look for other language that might expand to those rarities, that limited list of rarities. All right, motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Well, any other discussion, excuse me. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right, that brings us to reports and recommendations from the planning board and planning and development director, Kelly. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's very little on this to update you on. Happy to answer any questions. We have any outline for you, guidance that the planning board addressed this September 19th meeting. Those will obviously be coming with the board commissioner at some time. We have received 15 of the groundwater loggers and two of the water quality loggers. So we have those in hand. And we'll be coordinating the locations and the installation of the wells to get those up and going. They're saying relocation and due management cost share program. Previously, I noted that staff was working on some educational opportunities. We set up a presentation that will be in this room October 12th. That's a Thursday from 6:00 to 7:00 o'clock. We've invited all of our equipment operators, any property owners, anyone who's interested, who wants to come here and learn about the program, learn about the cost share management opportunity. And hopefully that will help us things run more simply this upcoming season. And that's, that's all I have. Happy to get any questions.
Questions? Yes.
Kelly, it's been a lot of interest in, by people asking what's going to be developed over at the Outer Banks Mall. Whether managers give me an answer, it might be beneficial for you to tell the public what's being done.
Sure. Yeah, over at the Outer Banks Mall, there's permits issued and they're currently constructing some EV chargers, like Tesla chargers. They're, you can see they're from the highway when you go by, but those are, those are permitted. They're wrapping them up now.
Is it only for Tesla or is it for other EVs?
So those are Tesla chargers, but oftentimes people have adapters that they can put on the Tesla charger that will make it work for other types of EVs. And so we have, as part of the project we have here with the town, I have reached out to ChargePoint to ensure that their infrastructures that we could potentially purchase from them would accommodate more types of EVs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kelly. Then that is going to bring us to the site plan review. So Kelly, we're going to need you to stick around. Sorry?
Don't we have a time specific in a couple minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry, we do, are we?
Oh, 10:30.
10:30.
Sorry, my apologies, ma'am.
That's okay.
Apologize, it's a large document. If anyone's left to read. So thank you, everybody. As familiar on some level could this request. October 5th, the planning board heard a, a request for site plan approval for the Inn at Little Run. It's a 90-room hotel near off of Lakeside. The board of commissioners did adopt the site plan at that time. We, we were contacted by the applicant not too long ago. They recognized that their site plan approval was about to expire and what needed to happen to keep that moving forward. And so I provided Section 4.15.1 to the applicant. I've got it up here on the screen as well. Essentially, it says that the building permit is not issued for the scope of work within 12 months from the date of approval, then the site plan shall expire. And the hotel's done a lot of work in terms of architectural renderings, their high-density stormwater, wastewater, things of that nature. They're not ready to submit their application for a building permit. So they had to resubmit and that's why it's before you begin today. The planning department, fire department, police, and public services, they've all reviewed the new submittal. They find it consistent with what was previously approved by the board on October 5th, 2022. The town engineer did have some revisions to note. We reviewed the stormwater design and noted that it has been slightly modified. They've removed the underground storage chamber system from the eastern parking lot and placed it along the western portion of the parking area with an underground storage chamber system. The change in location results in a greater subsurface storage area and an overall greater volume of stormwater storage for the site. The additional storage is concentrated on the western side of the site, which will mitigate potential, mitigate any potential for stormwater impacts along those adjoining properties to the west. From an overall stormwater management volume requirement, 20,220 cubic feet is required. 25,932 cubic feet of storage has been provided. And our town engineer, David Ryan, did provide a markup of that deviation and what it looks like for the board's consideration. Last year, the traffic impact analysis that was provided, it was reviewed by N C D O T just prior to the board of commissioners meeting. There were no comments at that time. Just to make sure, our town engineer sent that traffic impact analysis back to N C D O T a year's past. Do you have any comments, recommendations, anything further that you would like to add? And they stated that they had no additional comments. So that being said, staff continues to recommend approval of the site plan review application as it's been presented. I want to note that last year at this time, we had a condition and we would ask if that condition remained. That's an approved subdivision plat addressing portions of lots 24, 29, 30, and 31. And a recombination plat addressing lots 32 through 36 and 22 through 27 be approved and filed in the derekment register of deeds. So I don't know how much detail you would like for me to go into in this, but essentially, the gas station sits on a lot that was not, it was subdivided via deed, but there was no approved subdivision plat to go live in. So we would like to get that taken care of as part of this. Also, at that time, it was noted that there was a negative easement, which stated that the hotel property essentially needed to encumber the stormwater management from the gas station. At the board's October 2022 meeting, they had shown that they had met their onsite stormwater as well as receiving that from the gas station. And that was compliant at the time. And again, we noted the additional stormwater volume currently, so it still remains compliant. And the planning board reviewed this at their September 19th meeting. The vote was 4 of 1 to recommend approval of the site plan as proposed to include the previous condition regarding the recombination plat and the subdivision plat. There was a lot of conversation about traffic concerns and potential traffic measures being placed there for safety. We understood those, staff understood them. The applicant, Rick House, he's here today, he spoke as well. And I think it's a concern for everyone. One thing that we did discuss and the planning board included was a condition that after one year of operation, we request that an additional traffic impact analysis be conducted to determine if there's anything we can do at that time to mitigate any concerns that may arise. That's all I have for you. I won't go through the staff report from the previous approval unless you'd like them.
One question, can you confirm entrance off of 158 was also denied by the state?
It wasn't recommended, yes.
By the state?
By N C D O T, yes.
Kelly, can we, and this may not be a question for you, it may be a question for the attorney. Can we require of the developer that from the westernmost driveway of the hotel to 158, that improvements be made such as making, widening the street and making a turn, left turn lane marked and a right turn lane marked at the intersection of Lakeside and 158?
Staff, I'm not sure I can answer that. I would defer to the attorney.
Since there's going to be a lot more, 90-room hotel plus staff, that's a narrow two-lane, typical narrow town street, which is going to have a lot more traffic. And being a participant frequently of that gas station and seeing all the traffic, it's kind of crowded there and it definitely needs to be more than a two-lane left turn, two-lane road in and out. Needs to be at least a three-lane in to out.
Conditions that are imposed on a site plan application or a site plan amendment must bear a relationship to the criteria for site plan approval. And I think ingress and egress is one of those, one of those criteria.
Thank you, John.
Yes, ma'am.
So I would suggest that as part of the hotel approval process, that there be an added requirement to expand Lakeside Drive to account for all the traffic that's going to come from it, from the westernmost access to the intersection of 158.
So this would be the westernmost access?
There's two, there's two driveways, if I'm not, an east and a west. But from the westernmost access, from that to the intersection of 158, that that street be widened to accommodate the extra traffic as well as the, whatever D O T standards are, town standards are, to account for three-lane, wherever the three lanes start. Because it's going to be a stacking situation. We know that. It's a stacking situation now. If you add 90 rooms plus staff, it's going to become an even more stacking situation. So that may have to start at the westernmost and go all the way to 158. That's, I'm not the expert in that. The engineers, the traffic people are going to have to tell me that. But I just think that two lanes is not sufficient to account for traffic.
Commissioner Brinkley?
I support Commissioner Cohen's recommendation. I also appreciate the planning board talking about the traffic analysis be conducted after one full year of operation, see if an additional measures need to be made. One other question for you, was there any presentation from people that are doing the hotel that they plan to have any sort of transportation themselves, much like the Village uses, to keep people from the west side over to the beach? That maybe lessen some of the traffic? Because obviously, they're not, they shouldn't be walking, they shouldn't be crossing the bypass.
Right. I haven't heard from the applicant that they have any plan to do that. It doesn't mean that they don't, that's just not something that's been presented to us.
Thank you.
We can make that recommendation.
Thank you.
No, I support the two recommendations as well.
Regarding the recommendation for the street, I have a question that may require David. It's a 40-foot right-of-way. There's a water line. I'm wondering about drainage improvements that might be necessary to go with additional pavement? I'm just, I'm just, if, if the recommendation is for including additional pavement, then what else, there's, what else needs to go with that?
Right. Because of the minimal right-of-way width, we are somewhat constrained by expanding that pavement. And when we do that, yes, there, there does need to be consideration for drainage improvements because right now, there are some swales that are proposed with this development that do adjoin the right-of-way, which will be impacted by any increase within that pavement width that is being recommended.
Well, they have excess capacity, but we don't know on the, given the slope of that street, whether the water gets, you know, if we expand pavement, that street, whether the water gets, you know, if we expand pavement, you know, does the water necessarily go back up to, to that swell? If it's lower at the point of, and I'm raising questions that, you know, we're not going to have the information here to answer, I'm just thinking that this issue would have to be addressed.
Right. So, so the consideration would, would go beyond just the increased pavement width, yes, it would include drainage infrastructure to be able to accommodate that additional pavement width and to mitigate any runoff onto the.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, in light of that, may I offer a motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to table until the next meeting to get further information back from the town engineer.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. So I would ask staff about that timing, so that's, you know, a month, and there'd have to be some consultation with the applicant certainly about that.
Right. If you don't mind, if I can bring up Rick House, who is the applicant's engineer, to see if that time frame was working.
Good morning. My name's Rick House, House Engineering. I've known most of you, but not all of you. Anyway, we're here to extend the application that was approved a year ago so that we can finish up the application process. We've got the sewer, state sewer done, the stormwater done, soil erosion done, NC DOT, the traffic study has been done per staff's request. It seems a bit excessive at this meeting to, to ask the client to, to now, after DOT said there's no need, to go ahead and table it and make Lakeside, or West Peasant, as it used to be called, be widened, a left turn only, or left turn, right turn, three lanes in and out. You know, access to the beach will be, just like most homeowners, rental cottages, they'll get in their cars, they'll get a beach access. Question was asked at the planning board, whether they have a bus service or some kind of shuttle service to the, to the beach. I'm not 100% sure what the applicant has planned for that at, at this time, but it seems like we're just putting unnecessary, excessive ask for, you know, reevaluating stormwater and things like that. Increased stormwater, we're really close to Marriott approval and going for the building permit, and that's really the only reason we're here, was to extend the timeframe, couldn't get it done in a year, so. I would ask that we don't table this and make a vote to, as planning staff had done, ask for a traffic study once it's built and let DOT and the traffic study address it then and the town. And, and I'm sure Call Sharon might be involved with the hotel, as well as the town, the gas station at that time. But we're trying to get this thing permitted and built, so we're leaving, I mean, I just asked that we not table it tonight or this, this morning. And, and please, let's go ahead and have a vote on it, to see if we can get to the permit process and get the building permit. That, that's the main ask we're here for. And we'll be glad to do that. We've already agreed to do, once the building's built, to do a traffic study and have DOT reevaluate. And I totally agree with the left turn on the 158 from Corolla to, you know, the Well Blown Junction is a hard, it's a hard thing to do in summertime. And I would really like to, I'd like to see this move forward. And let's get this thing permitted. I think it's a great, it's a great hotel, it's a good-looking hotel. My client will be looking at additional measures for getting people from the hotel to the beach, I'm sure. Widening the road, will be a 40-foot right-of-way. So it's really narrow on the right-of-way now. We're capturing not only the gas stations that fluent, I mean, stormwater, but we've also added 5,000 cubic feet to the little west side, just as in a half, just to make sure that we didn't cause any drainage issues along Lakeside or 158. So I would, I would ask that we don't table this, but rather make a vote to, to let us get to the permit process and get a building permit, help build a structure, and at that time, do what staff has recommended and go ahead and do that, though, traffic study analysis, and it's, see what it actually, how it actually will affect. I don't think we're going to have 90 cars in and out of that place every day, every minute in the summertime. You're going to have traffic on every street in Dare County. It's going to be damn near impossible to take a left turn on the 158. That's just normal, and it has been for some time. If there's any other questions that you'd like to ask, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you. All right. So the...
If the applicant is anticipating ongoing, I would add a condition to the, any approval motion that would be made.
Okay. Let's, let's deal with the motion and the second that we have on the floor is to table.
I withdraw that for, but I would request other considerations.
Okay, all right. Then in which case, we would be ready then for a motion to approve or deny with any conditions?
Couple of comments. Dare, all of Dare County does not concern me, as Nag said, that concerns me. And this community concerns me back in that neighborhood, and I think this is going to be a major impact on that neighborhood. We've been dealing with other streets, town streets having influx of way too many people, such as downside road. And this is a public street, it's our responsibility as a town to maintain our public streets for the best safety of our residents. Disagreeing with DOT is not uncommon for me. But I would make a motion to adopt the site plan as presented with the addition that Lakeside Drive be improved to include by the applicant a left turn, right turn, out at the intersection of 158, as well as any possible widening of Lakeside from the westernmost exit to 158.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'll just note, I think, am I correct in saying that the DOT traffic survey is for the bypass? It's not for, it's people pulling off from Lakeside, so it doesn't have anything to do with people.
In Lakeside.
So they're concerned with just people getting to the bypass.
Lakeside is a town street.
So we're responsible for that. So DOT doesn't, so I think it's important to note that that's what we're trying to do, is to make that better regardless of what DOT's recommendations may be. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? My only concern, and I guess I feel compelled to say, Kahuna Caston has nothing to do with this project, by the way. That, my concern is that we're imposing a condition for a three-lanes and a 40-foot right-of-way that I think is going to be extremely difficult, and I'm concerned about imposing that condition at the, sort of the, the late hour. That's, that's my, that's my only concern. So any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
We have a 10:30 specific item, those folks are here, we've got 10 minutes, so I suggest we take a recess at this point. Board will be in recess until about 10:30. The board has returned to session, and we will proceed to our 10:30 time-specific item. That's new business, item I four, discussion of the beach nourishment master plan. David.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Board of Commissioners. At your August meeting, you heard the report that was given by Moffett and Nickel, which is our beach engineering consultant, on the multi-decadal beach nourishment master plan. The key aspects of that plan included things such as level of protection, long-term sediment sand sources, as well as nourishment intervals, triggers, regulatory pathways, project timelines, and estimated future costs. There were a couple of decision points within that report. There were some alternatives that were given as far as the frequency of beach nourishment intervals. There was a project-wide six-year term, as well as a phased approach, which was a five- and 10-year term. So we have Beth Shiodone from Moffett and Nickel here to go ahead and, go ahead and give a brief summary of those alternatives that were discussed previously and try to get board feedback about those alternatives or other alternatives that were included in the report that the board would like to go ahead and discuss. There is one thing that I wanted to make of note. Staff has been monitoring the condition of the beach, especially over the past month and a half or so. We have seen a lot of high-energy wave action here along the beach with the storms that have passed through off the coast, and we have seen some significant changes in our beach profile as a result of that. One of the things that the board may want to consider, when we discuss our annual beach condition survey, we do that during the ideal time of the year, and that's done during the, the summer months. But we may want to go ahead and look at a supplemental survey that covers a, a fall or a winter profile. And, and so that may be something that the board, due to the, to the recent storm activity and the changes in the condition of the beach, may want to consider as we move forward in the future so we can better assess those impacts, both during the ideal time of the year and also post-storm activity. And so without further ado, I'm going to bring up Dr. Shiodone, and she's going to give a brief presentation on the beach nourishment master plan. Thank you.
Thanks so much, David, and thank you, board and mayor. Again, just a brief outline, just going to go through a brief summary and our alternatives, and then go into the discussion. So as we discussed in August, in developing this master plan, we were trying to come up with a long-term strategy to permit, schedule, and finance your ongoing beach nourishment efforts. We've developed alternatives, we've developed preliminary costs, we've developed timelines or schedules for both a maintenance project regularly scheduled and a potential storm response. We have ensured that there is enough sand to do these projects over the 50-year timeframe. We've established volumetric triggers. And the last little piece is to provide a basis to continue to qualify for FEMA reimbursement for sand loss during a federally declared disaster. In order to do that, we have to update the FEMA-approved beach maintenance and monitoring plan, and that will happen once the preferred alternative is selected, so we're going to be discussing that today. Again, the alternatives we looked at, let's don't do any more beach nourishment, different intervals, and then also beach nourishment with structures as well. The north end wasn't included in the alternatives analysis because the erosion rate in that particular reach is so low, it wouldn't necessarily need to be nursed until like the 48th year of the 50-year master plan, barring any kind of storm impacts. So that little volume was included in the master plan volume as far as how much we need from the borrow area, but it's not included in the number, in the individual projects up into the 48 years. And the cost comparison that I'm presenting today are in today's dollars. We're actually working on escalating those for reference later into future costs, but that will be in the final report.
Beth, could I clarify one thing?
Yes.
The north end, when you say that, you mean north of Bonnet Street?
Correct, north of Bonnet, where it has not ever been nursed before. Yes, thank you. Okay, so these were the cycle alternatives. As David mentioned, out of this, the one we were recommending was a six-year cycle. That is not the very cheapest alternative. The cheapest is the eight-year cycle because there are fewer mobilizations and demobilizations. We're primarily evaluating these based on the costs and the volume density available. But we felt like with a six-year cycle, that would give us, or give the town the ability to respond quickly to, more, more quickly than with an eight-year cycle to any kind of isolated storm effects or additional hotspots that may develop. So we recommended the, the six-year cycle for that. And then we wanted to, we also discussed in August the advantages of going ahead and nourishing the entire project, all the reaches in each project. That reduces the number of projects required over the whole 50 years. It minimizes the number of times you have to go through permitting. It kind of, the six-year cycle, as I said, balances the costs of the projects and then allows the flexibility to adapt to different changes in the erosion rates. Disadvantages being, if you're nourishing the entire nursed project, then you are going to be disrupting that entire area during the nourishment project, and there may be a higher unit cost for sand that's placed with less fill density. So like, if in reach one, you don't necessarily need sand every six years, you need it maybe a little bit less frequently because of the rate. It's not eroding as fast up there, so then you're not placing as much. If you're not placing as much, it's a little more difficult for the contractor, and so that unit cost per cubic yard is a little bit higher. Then we looked at the phase alternatives. This is where essentially you're just skipping reach one every other project. So we looked at a four and eight-year and a five and 10, and we were recommending the five and 10. So every five years, actually, yeah, every five years, you're nourishing reaches two through four, and then every other project, you're also adding reach one. So every five years, you're doing those southern reaches, and then on the, on the alternating years, you add that reach one portion. When you compare the costs, the phased nourishment project comes out to be a little bit more expensive on a total cost over the 50 years. That's this 294 million versus 273 million for the six-year cycle. You will notice that you alternate between lower costs and higher-cost projects because in the alternating cycles, you're not doing reach ones, so you have a little bit of lower cost there and a little bit of higher cost once you add in reach one on the alternating Some of the advantages of the phased approach, then at that point, you're, you're placing higher volumetric density in reach one, so you get a little bit lower cost per cubic yard. Then your reach one section of the shoreline wouldn't be such, subjected to the disturbances associated with the project construction as often. And then there may be some benefits financially to alternating between that lower and a higher cost project. Disadvantages being having more frequent projects, like every five years instead of every six years, you have more mobilization and demobilization costs over the 50 years, and you do have more frequent requirements to complete the environmental permitting process. So our recommendations were, keep, that, keep doing the annual monitoring to keep determining the volume status and comparing with our nourishment triggers. As David mentioned, that's also maybe something that maybe not every year, but maybe if you have a year like this year, you consider also adding in a fall survey as well. The two preferred alternatives were the six-year nourishment cycle for the entire nursed shoreline. Again, that could be adjusted, like if you have a really good year, you don't necessarily need to do your project that year, you, or you can adjust maybe the boundaries of that project as needed. But just to, for planning purposes, to plan and have that financing and everything in place for the six years, that's one alternative that we were recommending, the other being the five to 10-year, if, if there is some preference for sort of alternating with the reach one. And also, that may, may allow some coordination with the northern towns who seem to kind of be on a five-year cycle. There are also trade-offs, maybe that, that helps somewhat with the costs, coordinating with the dredging companies doing all those. the dredging companies doing all those projects at once. There may be some, you know, disadvantages too, like there's a lot of demand for dredging companies, maybe it's, you know, there's just some potential for synergies there with the five-to-ten-year approach that I think we still need to kind of fully discuss with the other towns, if that was something feasible, but that is something that might be considered with the five-to-ten-year phased approach. And kind of, that's the very brief summary. So we're open to your questions and discussion or feedback on the report. And as David said, also, if you have questions or discussion on other aspects of the report, we welcome that as well. Thank you very much.
Questions, comments?
Question, on the five-to-ten-year phased approach, you said something about reach one only getting sand every ten years?
Every sand, yes, ma'am.
So reach one pretty much pays most of the bills, when you think about the bills for beach nourishment, telling them that they're going to get sand every ten years and everybody else is getting it every five, may not go over real well with our citizenry. Because for each one, it's pretty much the moneymaker.
Majority, right.
And there may also be kind of isolated areas within reach one that do need response. So that might be another reason why the six-year is preferred.
Well, one thing we're going to be discussing, too, is with the new MSDs, how we pay for the project. And so if we do that alternative, that would factor into the alternative you consider for how you're going to set up the MSD tax rates. I mean, that would have a bearing on that, I would imagine.
It'd be kind of hard to decide if we're going to do six or ten without having all that information before us, too. The scientific approach, thank you very much, I appreciate the information, but the town's got, we can't put the cart before the horse either by agreeing to one without having all the information about how you get to the other part.
Right. And they also have impacts on staff in terms of, like, their finance staff and their engineering staff in terms of...
There's got to be some synergy there to work.
You know, without sort of beach nourishment becoming their full-time job, too. What does staff want to do?
Well, that's a good question. I mean, we were going to plan a discussion about the MSD tax rates, but, you know, we still have a few questions that I think Beth alluded to. We wanted to generate questions at this meeting and not necessarily make a decision today. And so I think some of these questions are good. You know, she brought up the timing of what the other towns are doing, and so really getting into the five- and ten-year phased approach, you know, how does what the other towns are doing influence the cost-effectiveness of that or not? That's something that we need to figure out a little bit more. And then, you know, one of the things, and David might be able to answer this better, but, you know, when you do a five- and ten-year phased approach, you're doing a project south of Genette's Pier every five years, and what's not really built into the alternatives is any FEMA project. And so what we've done in the past is we've tried to combine FEMA projects with our own projects, but there's always a, you know, a limit on how far we can extend that. Like, when we get a FEMA project, you know, if we're not going to do another project for four years, we probably won't be able to combine it, but if we're going to do one in two years, then we probably can. And so in doing a five- and ten-year phased approach probably helps in that regard. David might have more information on that. I do like the idea of not impacting portions of the town that don't really need the sand, you know, because it is a big impact on the community, and the ten-year is really what they were looking at in terms of the need. You know, the erosion rates north of Genette's Pier are just so much lower. Obviously, you have storms in times like now where it seems like...
Elevation's dropped a lot.
Yeah, it needs it. And then obviously, things are always moving around, so it's really hard to get a sense of the need sometimes, because I know I was contacted this past week by someone in the historic district, and that they've seen their elevation drop a lot and a lot of escarping going on. But I think some of that sand's probably in the near shore, it's just not on the visible beach. But without a survey this time of the year, you know, it's all sort of speculation. And so I do like David's suggestion about the winter survey, because it really helps, helps people understand what's going on. But I guess, at this point, my answer to your question is, we're still thinking about it, and maybe within another month, you know, we can start to get enough information to come up with some sort of recommendation on which way we would like to go.
I think David wants to answer your question.
And I'd like to add, you know, from a staff perspective, Andy had talked about, you know, one thing that's not built into this are the FEMA projects. From, we'll talk about the most recent FEMA project, which was the Hurricane Dorian Restoration Project. That was initiated back in 2019, and just within this last week or so, we closed out that project. So that's a four-year process, and it does, it takes up a lot of staff time between myself, finance, public information officer, to be able to bring everything together, to go through the FEMA process, much less the construction, the public information, and then project closeout. And so they are very time-consuming, and that's outside of our regularly scheduled maintenance projects.
If we can combine them, and I know, one of the things we did with this project, because what we found out is that if we were going to try and combine the project with a town project, then there was going to be a preradic cost distribution on the mobilization. And so we just decided to do a FEMA standalone project because it was going to cost the town money to do a FEMA project, and we weren't already planning a project. But if we can combine it with our own projects, we know there's going to be that preradic cost share, but, you know, it cuts down on that extra workload if we're able to roll that FEMA project into a scheduled project every time. And so it is something to consider that...
Right, and we have had experience at that with the Post Matthews Restoration Project, where we combined that in 2019 with our regularly scheduled maintenance project.
And that gave us huge advantages from an economies of scale perspective. You know, we were originally talking about, back then, putting two-point-three million cubic yards of sand on the beach. Because of that combination of projects, we were able to put four million cubic yards of sand. So it was almost equivalent to the original nourishment in 2011. So that was huge for the town.
Knowing the condition of the beach and the two alternatives, if we decided that the six-year nourishment cycle was right, and given where we are with the beach now, when would the first project on the six-year cycle be?
Well, I can go back, and I'll let Brian answer this as well. I think when we started this process and we were planning for the Dorian project, we were looking at the twenty-six, twenty-seven timeframe to go ahead and initiate our next maintenance project. But that may change based upon the conditions of the beach that we see today. Brian, I'll let you go ahead and expand on that.
Bring this down a little lower for me. Yeah, what David said is what we have been looking at over the last couple of weeks getting ready for this meeting, that it's the twenty, twenty-two, twenty-six, twenty-two, seventy timeframe, based on the summers data that we've already had. If another survey's done and we can evaluate more losses, you know, that may push that more toward twenty-two, sixty, but we felt like twenty-two, seventy was a good target based on the last data we had.
And if we decided on the five- and ten-year phased approach, then when and where would we do most likely the next projects?
I think in the first one, the next nourishment, would be about the same time. Like, it would need, the beach now would need the nourishment in that twenty-two, twenty-six, twenty-seven timeframe. It would probably, I think, focus more on the southern end of the town, the reach two, three, and four, given what we've seen so far. As I think Beth and maybe David also pointed out, there are areas in reach one that may need some sand. So that would just, that would have to be, I guess, our engineering analysis recommendation, we'd have to be a little more careful looking at the data in reach one to decide if that needed anything in that next cycle. But from what we've seen so far, it looks like we'd probably start with the southern part of the town and then come back later and do the full town in the next, next nourishment, if we did that cycle.
We also need, back to Commissioner Coon's comments earlier, you know, if we were going to consider a five- and ten-year phased approach, we'd need to go back to the county and talk about how we would build that into the model and sort of do a cost comparison between the five and six and...
Based on your question, based on your answer just now, where you said a five-year plan, you'd start twenty-six, twenty-seven, and it would be focused on the southern end of the town, then that, does that mean the ten-year plan for the town for reach one would be another ten years after that, or eight years after that, or five years after that?
Yeah.
So you're talking about northern end, reach one wouldn't be until thirty, thirty-one?
Yes, sorry, I see that.
I was going to follow up.
Yes, approximately.
That's what I wanted to ask.
Which is an awful long time, be paying for a beach with no sand.
Kind of as an aside, I don't want to interrupt that flow too much, but it's something to consider. If the town selected, and I know, like, you're asking for our advice and recommendation, too, if we collectively selected a six-year nourishment cycle to do the whole town, I think our, every time we did it, if we're continuing to help you prepare the plans, we'd want to look at what's needed where specifically. It doesn't mean you're going to place grains of sand on every linear foot of beach. If we evaluated that in the, some part of reach one, or even some part of reach two, that there was a lot of beach just out there past even where it designed was, it wouldn't be cost-effective to try to place sand there just to do it. So we could line out areas of the town, even in the full town nourishment every six years, that maybe you don't place sand in a very specific spot if it doesn't need it. So that kind of tailoring needs to be done every time anyway, in my opinion. So if it's, if it's not easier, that's not the right word, if it seems more preferable to continue to look at the whole town on a six-year cycle, if that seems better to the board and to staff and to those you represent, just keep in mind you have that ability to tailor it every time, too. And the last thing I'll say, this whole decision we're asking between the six-year and the five- and ten-year cycles, one function of that decision is to go into the plan you present to FEMA that the town commits to, that helps them understand you're committed to beach nourishment. So it's not a decide at once, never change it thing, it's a decide something to turn into a document to FEMA shortly after the master plan report is finalized, so that we can update FEMA. It doesn't mean you can't adjust it in the future, but we need to pick one or the other to say to FEMA, so that they kind of know what you're doing. Let's stop there.
Okay. And I think it's only one or two slides back. Remind me, the phased approach is the one that's slightly more expensive over the fifty-year period?
Correct. And again, these are, yeah, these are just today's costs multiplied by, you know, so we haven't done that full economic analysis on these numbers, but yeah, it's about twenty million difference according to this analysis.
But also, the phased approach gives you the ability to possibly work with other towns that could reduce the cost?
It could potentially reduce the cost. I mean, I think that's a question that we probably need to discuss further with the potential other towns and maybe the county, and you can speak to that, but it does appear like they're on the five-year kind of cycle, and if that is something that could benefit, like if there's already a dredge coming and that mobilization cost can be shared, then that can provide some benefits, because mobilization, demobilization is a pretty significant cost.
Also, at what time in the year do you look at the beach to make the determination whether it needs sand or not? Because I know, like, in times of the year like this, it looks really bad, but as Andy noted, there could be sand out still in the system that comes back in the summertime, and the beach looks a lot better then.
Yeah, and that's why I think historically, those monitoring surveys have been done in the summer, to kind of get the, you know, fully capture, like, okay, the sand is still out there, it's now here, you know, it might not be as dire as it looked, you know, right after hurricane season and so forth, so that's why it's historically been done in the summer.
In the summer months, okay.
Yeah.
Just tagging on to that, one thing, just to remind ourselves always, and I have to think about this, is if the sand is still in the system, so if something, if it looks a certain way in the summer, and then winter storms roll through and the sand moves offshore a bit, if it's still captured within that decision point, like above minus nineteen-foot elevation, we survey all the way out and we analyze out, if it's still captured in that, then the volume would still be there and we would see it. So what the winter survey would show you is, one, if that volume is still present in the system or if it's migrated out, but it would also show you and be able to show everyone that it's likely to come back, that it's still there. You can make a decision based on the fact that it's still there.
Gotcha.
And then you start to evaluate, well, is it, do we have enough in the right place? Do we have enough sand in the dune, up on the beach where it breaks the waves, and we can make that decision, too? And that's one reason we look at it sort of in the summer, because that's leading into hurricane season. So there's pluses and minuses to looking at the winter versus the summer. If you looked at both, that's really good data, but that adds up, obviously.
And does the, do we also take into account that prediction that we're going to have more severe storms all the time, based on sea level rise and climate change?
I mean, when we did sort of like that larger estimate of how much sand do we need over this fifty years, we tried to do that, like, we tried to kind of overestimate the number of storms that might be needed and the volume that might be needed for that. I think we went with like a seventy, seventy-five percent, seventy-five percentile chance number, like a big size number. It's not really these numbers, because these are sort of more that, like, what is the town going to have to pay for, what does the maintenance need, hoping, I mean, you know, kind of working with that assumption that the FEMA will continue to pay for the storm repair type projects. But as far as the actual quantity of sand over the fifty years, we have, yes, tried to account for that in that analysis. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Could I ask one quick question?
Yes, sure, of course.
So I know we're trying to wrap this up, we've been working on it, and we're also going to eventually talk about our next project, but in terms of timing, is there anything critical right now that is waiting on this decision? How much, how much time do we have with this decision? You know, and I guess, I guess the, because there's a lot of things we might have to figure out, and so, you know, we're sort of backing into the timeline you're included in the report for the next project, and I'm just thinking that that could be potential critical path. And so if you're talking about earliest twenty-twenty-six project and a two-year permitting window, we would need to wrap this decision up by...
Next year. I mean, probably, I mean, I think, I don't know, Brian, what it...
Actually, correct me if I get this wrong, but so, it's always better to try to start the permitting process earlier and have the permit on the shelf waiting for you, instead of you waiting for the permit to bid. I would think if you'd want to, if we want to try for twenty-twenty-six for a nourishment, then I would start the permitting next spring, summer, fall, like, maybe, let's say next summer, and maybe that varies a little bit, depending on the data we see between now and then.
Yeah, after the monitoring.
Yeah. So maybe try to start that permitting process, the coordination and pre-application stuff next summer. I think it would ideally, yeah, we would know what the town's plan is going forward by then, so that we could say to everybody what the plan is and give the agencies and FEMA and everybody that clarity. It is, when we started this process, you know, we had, in addition to what we've talked about so far, an environmental impact statement and a programmatic permit involved, that, and if we were still doing that, backing up, the feedback we got from the Army Corps of Engineers was that they were not amenable to doing that programmatic permit and having it on the books as a programmatic permit to nourish every so often without having to go back to them and ask for the permit again, or doing a programmatic EIS. So at the moment, that is to the side, and that EIS and the permit would have required the master plan report to be completed and this decision to be made to go into that. Not doing the environmental impact statement and the programmatic permit for the Corps takes, I think, takes some pressure off of that. We were happy to wrap the report up whenever we, I think we do need this decision, or at least a provisional decision, to wrap up the report and present it final, so that y'all can then use it to plan finances. But the time pressure to complete that, from our perspective, understanding the workflow, is less now, given that we're not doing the programmatic permit. So I would say sometime between now and the spring, we would like to have this sort of... So I would say sometime between now and the spring, we would like to have this sort of understood, at least provisionally, to put into the version one of the master plan report so that we can then start permitting and acting on it from that standpoint. And then FEMA, again, we would update them whenever we have a decision. I don't think there's any specific pressure from FEMA to update the plan by a certain date or anything like that.
So Amy, real quick, could you come up for just one second? We, did we just make our, are we making our last debt payment on the twenty-nineteen project this fiscal year?
Yes, our last debt payment was already made.
So come next budget year, we're gonna be trying to figure out new tax rates for the MSDs, cause we'll have paid off our last project. So that, the timing of all of this is coming together for the spring, I think, making this decision, setting the new tax rates to pay for the next project.
So the bigger conversation, I, I, I think to be, be had is with the county about the financing. If we went to the five and ten-year model and what kind of impact that would have on, on their contribution to our projects. And I'd suggest, you know, I don't know if there's any modeling that we need to do, but I would suggest we have that conversation early. Yeah, soon. And sort of report that conversation back to the board. And I think that maybe gives us some guidance to where we start to, you know, whatever line of thinking is going into the winter and starting to think about the budget.
Okay, well, we'll start working on that and to supplement this decision before we make it.
Yeah, I mean, I understand we've got two great tech, technical alternatives here, but there's also the financial and the, and the PR pieces of this.
I appreciate the presentation, a lot of information. I do like the winter time survey.
I agree with that.
I think that's, we feel well worth the expense to know what we still have out there.
Yeah. Mr. Sanders.
Thank you.
Mr. Sanders.
No, thank you. The report was great. You've given us some great alternatives and a lot of things we have to think about financially, scientifically and time-wise. But we also need to go ahead and try to tell staff we do endorse the winter time survey.
Yes. Mr. Sears.
Agreed.
Okay. If, if I can add, the, we talked about the, the winter time survey. Is that something that the board would like to move forward with sooner rather than later? And if so, do you want to authorize that now? We have received an approximate estimate on that and the cost of that is between seventy to seventy-five thousand dollars to go ahead and get that conducted.
It is expensive, but I still think it'd be worth it.
Yeah.
It can be used to base our decisions about moving forward.
Well, I think you'd be able to see the difference between winter time and summer time, what the quality is.
And I mean, I would, I would kind of hate to go into these discussions we're getting ready to have if we're gonna switch to that winter time model and not just go ahead and have the advantage of that information. Mr. Sears.
Fine, okay.
Okay. Then I'm hearing, and we could put this to a vote if you think, if you guys think it's more appropriate to, to authorize staff. I think we probably do need to do that because we've got money involved. So I think a motion to authorize staff to proceed with a winter survey, can we say not to exceed?
Seventy-five thousand? Yes, not to exceed seventy-five thousand.
Seventy-five thousand dollars. Okay, and let's get a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Thank you.
All right, and lastly, we were scheduled to come back here in November timeframe to report out on the summer beach survey. Did you want to hold off on that until we get the report for the fall survey so we can have a point of comparison?
What would the timing be?
Yes.
Yes.
I see, yes.
And so we'd probably be looking at beginning of the year.
That would be significant, yeah.
Yeah, so, so then we would report back January, February timeframe with the comparison.
With, and with the, with both surveys.
Correct.
And by that time, you know, I would hope that we've had these conversations with the, with the county and we have a better sense and, you know, we sort of revisit this conversation with staff available. Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
That brings us back then to item H1, which is considering a resolution to close a portion of Old Nags Head Woods Road. Andy?
All right, just one minute.
All right, so just to bring the board back on this item, this is something that was requested by Stan White and Louise Afar. They, they had requested that the board consider vacating a portion of Old Nags Head Woods Road on their properties, which are lots three and four of the Ralph Buxton subdivision. The board first discussed this, I believe, back in July and passed a resolution of intent to consider this. In August, the board held a public hearing on this item and tabled the item awaiting a survey of the easement and also of the roadway. So now we've received that survey and we know where the easement is, we know where the road is. We have a copy of that on file in our office for anyone to view that. And we've, we verified and validated everything, and so we, we feel comfortable with what's being recommended. I know there was concerns from some of the neighbors that we didn't want to abandon any portion of the right-of-way that would deprive anyone of access. And on the screen here is a plat and the, the area highlighted in yellow is the area we're talking about. Just on the north side of that highlighted area is where Stan White's driveway for his residence comes in to the right-of-way. And so the idea is that we would abandon the portion of the right-of-way south of his driveway. Going back to the original purpose for which we have the easement, prior to the Ralph Buxton subdivision, the town did not have a ten-foot wide easement on these four lots. As part of the approval for the subdivision, the town requested the easement in order to be able to provide access to those properties. Since that time, we know now that Stan White has provided access north of the highlighted yellow area. And Louise Afar has now developed her property with the driveway directly to Villa Dune's Drive. So the, the purpose for which the easement in the highlighted area was created has been satisfied. And so abandoning the, the easement in this area would not deprive anyone of access, nor would defeat the purpose for which the easement was provided to the town in the first place. So we included a description of the easement in the resolution to, to abandon this right-of-way. And that would be approximately a hundred and thirty feet north of the, the boundary between lots three and four, which is essentially the, the bend in the roadway there, as you can see on the screen. As the board is aware, we've talked to all the owners in the area and we did, we did not receive any objections from, from anyone. And so the staff did recommend vacating this right-of-way. And so you have the resolution in your packet and it's for your decision at this point. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Andy? Hearing none, and a, a motion would be in order if there aren't any questions.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the resolution to close a portion of Old Nags Head Woods Road. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us next to, from our September sixth board meeting, appointment of members to the Fire Staffing Analysis Working Group. And you have that in your packet, Andy. I don't know that you need to speak to this. We, we had heard that Mead Gwynn and Bob Mower, who have experience with the fire department, were interested in serving. We, Commissioner Brinkley volunteered and we designated Commissioner Brinkley to be the, to be the board liaison to this committee. So what remains is just a formal nomination to put these folks on unless there are other names. I have a motion and a second to appoint Mead Gwynn, Bob Mower, and formally appoint Commissioner Brinkley to this working group. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Thank you. That brings us to committee reports, and I will start to my left, Commissioner Sears.
Nothing to report.
Mr. Cahoon.
There was a recent meeting of the GovEd Channel, as I still call it, and we all met our new director that was hired within Locally.
I'd like to compliment those folks. I mean, the, the whole Ash Wednesday storm thing and the follow-up video and all of that was just really well done.
Yeah, Roberta and our staff did a really great job, the History Center, the videographer, they did a really good job, well received.
Yes.
Shocked at the amount of turnout.
Yes.
Shocked.
Pretty amazing. Commissioner Brinkley?
Nothing to report, sir.
Nothing new to report?
Okay, very good, thank you. Then that brings us to consideration of an appointment to the Septic Health Committee. You have in your packet the name Rob Crawford, who's well-known to all of us, who's been involved in wastewater systems here.
Think he'll be a great asset to our, to our working group, our committee. And I'd like to formally make a motion that we appoint him to be a part of our group.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
All right, very good, thank you. Now that brings us to consideration of award of bid for Old Nags Head Place Drainage. Is that David? Where'd David go?
I think he walked outside with the Moffett Nickel people.
Oh. Yes, please. Sorry, David, we're, we're moving along now. Old Nags Head Place.
You're out there long enough for your glasses to change.
Yeah.
You gotta like that.
Sunshine it too, it's.
What a shock.
Looks nice.
Okay. All right, so recently, we solicited formal bids for the Old Nags Head Place Drainage Restoration Project. This is a project that we've been working on for several years. We bid it out last year and did not have the available funds to move forward with the project. We had since gone to Golden Leaf and applied for a flood mitigation grant through them, which we were able to secure. So at this time, we have six hundred thousand dollars budgeted for this project, which is a combination of town funds and the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars. We also have a public-private partnership with the Old Nags Head Place Homeowners Association and their contribution is a hundred thousand dollars plus the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars that we received from the Golden Leaf Grant. We received four formal bids recently for this project. They were from Hatchell Concrete, Sawyer and Sons Construction, Fred Smith Company, and EnviroTech Unlimited Construction Services. EnviroTech submitted the lowest responsive, responsible, responsible bid in the amount of five-hundred-and-fourteen thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Attached with your board packet is a copy of that bid tabulation. And the board action requested is to issue the notice of award to EnviroTech Unlimited Construction Services as the lowest responsive, responsible bidder. And that you permit the town manager to execute the construction amount in the amount of five-hundred-and-fourteen thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars and zero cents contingent upon town attorney review. Be glad to answer any questions that you have. Also wanted to note that we have sent out mailers to all the impacted property owners and staff is going to go ahead and speak at the annual homeowners association meeting this coming Saturday to go ahead and discuss this project with the impacted residents.
And assuming its approves, would, would be the start date?
The start date, we're looking at October sixteenth and substantial completion mid-April twenty-twenty-four.
Okay. Any questions for David? Hearing none, in that case, then a motion would be in order to, I guess, both approve the bid and authorize the manager to enter into contract?
That's correct.
I made that motion.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion?
Does not include the alternates, so is that correct?
The alternates were, were deducts, and so the base bid amount includes everything.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Then all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. All right, thank you.
That'll be good to get that one off, off the plate. All right, that brings us to items from the town attorney. Mr. Lyde?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a request for a, a closed session at the appropriate time, but otherwise, nothing to present right now.
Thank you. And then that brings us, David, we'll bring you back to item K1, an update on public services facility.
All right, up here on your screen is an exhibit that I've introduced before at previous, previous meetings to go ahead and monitor the construction progress for our public services redevelopment project. Just to familiarize those who have not seen this before, on the right-hand side of the page, this is the eastern side. It's divided by Larkin Avenue. And then over here to the west, that is where our existing public services building currently exists. So we'll start off with the administration building, which is over here on the right-hand, hand side of the page. That's shown in purple. We'll go through some of the pictures. This is where we were last month with our construction progress. They were starting to, they had the roof trusses on, they had part of the exterior wall framing sheet. And we have progressed to this point, this month. This picture was taken yesterday. We've got the interior walls framed out. We've got the roof, the roof in place with the exception of the, the standing seam metal roof. We've got the exterior sheathing on and we've got the electrical rough-in currently taking place. This is taken from the, from the Larkin Avenue side, from the southwest corner of the building. This is the south side of the building. Here we have the rear of the building. And here we have a picture of the interior framing and the beginning of the electrical rough-in for the administration building. Moving over to our largest building, which is the Fleet Facilities Maintenance and Sanitation Building. This is where we were last month. We had the foundation in place along with the piers. And you can see that we've made some significant. some significant progress. We've got the superstructure in place, and we have the exterior block walls currently going up on the very east end of the project. Here you can see, we've got the roof in place, and then this is the partition wall. That's between the common area and the fleet maintenance portion of the building. As you can see here to the right, we've got the foundation for the facilities maintenance portion of the building in place, and that, that red iron framing is expected to start going up later this week and into next week. And so by next month, we should have the building superstructure in place, the masonry walls, block going up along the exterior, the roof in place, and also the beginning of the interior slabs to be poured. Here's another perspective, and this is taken from the very western edge of the building. So you can see some significant progress made within this past month with that vertical construction for that building. Up here, closer to where our water plant is, we have the water distribution building. This is where we were last month. We had the exterior block wall framing taking place, and we have progressed to the point where that is all in place with the rear and the sides of the building. We've got all of the interior slabs currently poured. This is a picture of the common area, and then here is, here is the bay for the water distribution, and you can see here in this picture that we've got the end of the, the western end of the block wall completely in place. So what we're going to see over the course of the next month is the front side of that building, we're going to see that block put in place as well as the interior mezzanine put in place. And so one other area that I wanted to note, this is our equipment building. We had previously prepped the pad for that. We anticipate that building foundation to start progressing forward next week, and so next month when we report out, we should have that foundation in place and the vertical construction start for that portion of the project. At this point in time, the schedule remains intact. We, we fell a little bit behind with the administration building, but every, all the other buildings are moving forward based upon the original schedule that was provided to us. We anticipate that beginning on and around December 1st, that they will start, or they'll start back up with the site work over here in the brush yard, so that may impact the operation whenever that occurs. And the last building to go ahead and be constructed is the vehicle storage building, which is here in the center of the project. We anticipate that building construction to begin on and around January 1st. So I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have at this time.
There were some changes to fleet fueling as part of this, and have, have those been done, and, and what are we doing about, has fueling of vehicles been affected, and have we worked around that, or has that change already been put in place?
So at the very front end of the project, we had a permanent fueling station on the backside of our existing public services building. When we had to remove that in order to go ahead and start preparing some initial site work, we contracted with our fuel vendor, and we've got a temporary setup over here on the very eastern side of our brush yard, where we have a temporary fueling setup. And so we, that has been in the operation, I think, the beginning of May. But when they do move over here and re-initiate that site work for the administration site, we're going to have to take that out of service.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Any other questions for David?
And the backup plan for taking it out of service?
Wax cards.
Wax cards, yes.
We'll, we'll be fueling it locally at local service stations, gas stations.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Next item on our agenda is item K2, consideration of an interlocal agreement with Dare County for the proposed EMS station. Is this you, Andy?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. So I'd updated the board on this, I believe, back in August. So as the board is aware, we've been working on a potential project with Dare County to construct an EMS station and eventually a fire station for the town of Nagshead. Last year, the town acquired a piece of property across the street at 105 West Sea Chase Drive, which is adjacent to our existing fire station. The county had expressed interest in pursuing this, and so we began discussions at that time. Since then, we had developed a draft sketch to try and determine what this configuration would look like and how it could be arranged. We determined that we could fit a facility on that property in its entirety, so that would allow our fire station to continue to operate until a new one was completed. So I had been meeting with county manager about this over the last few months, and we have developed an interlocal agreement to, to sort of put into writing what the working relationship for this project would look like. And, and so essentially, it's fairly simple. The interlocal agreement basically states that the town would allow the county to use its property at 105 West Sea Chase to construct the EMS station, and the county would pay for the planning costs associated with both facilities, to include the EMS station and the fire station, which is a substantial cost. The town would receive construction drawings for a new fire station as a result of allowing the county to use the property. We anticipate working with the county on the design to receive exactly what we would like to see in the future for a fire station. The county has moved the EMS station up in their CIP, noting that the EMS station at Nagshead is a high priority for them, and it's sort of a key service location for the county. And so what they would like to try and do is have this ready to put out to bid sometime in the summer of 2024, with construction beginning sometime next fall. And they would obviously finance and manage the construction of the facility, and the interlocal agreement sort of establishes all of that, including maintenance of the We expect the design firm to be Oakley Collier, the same company that designed our Public Works. They've done a lot of work for the county as well, and there's fairly high confidence in them that we would get exactly what we want with that. So that essentially explains the arrangement. In your packet is a draft interlocal agreement and also a lease that would establish the terms for the county being able to use this property. And what we're asking the board to consider today is authorizing the town manager to execute the interlocal agreement, and then also authorizing the town manager to execute the lease agreement, but only at such time that both parties have developed a site plan for the project to, to know that we'd be able to move forward. And certainly, you're going to be involved in the decisions for this as the design moves forward, and this would also have to go through planning board and board of commissioners' review for zoning at some point. We anticipate maybe early spring, early to late spring. But anyway, that's what we have for you, consideration of those two items. So happy to answer any questions.
No questions for you.
One more thing, the county has not approved this yet, that we, we wanted to put this in front of you first.
Hearing questions, perhaps a motion would be in effect, would be in, would be appropriate.
Make a motion to that we authorize the town manager to execute the interlocal agreement and also to execute the lease agreement after the site plan has been developed.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Consideration of the Earl Murray Junior Employee of the Year policy. Jan.
Hey, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
So staff is proposing some minor changes to the employee of the year program, and that's really to help aid the board in selection of the townwide employee of the year. So currently, each department does their own process to come up with a departmental nomination, and we'd like to create a consistent, but still simple guidance that applies to all staff. So the proposed policy is in your packets, but I just wanted to highlight a few items here. So one of the changes that we've introduced is a peer recognition component across all departments, and so that, that would mean that all staff have the opportunity to put forward a nomination, not only within their own department, but across departments as they, as they would wish. And then the call for nominations would be distributed to all town employees. Nominations would still be sent to department heads, and ultimately, the department's heads would decide on the departmental nomination, so they still have that decision, that decision to make. And then the, the departmental employee of the year would be forwarded to the board of commissioners for consideration. We would use the same nomination form for all submissions, and we wanted to incorporate both how an individual has gone above and beyond in their contributions, the impact that they made, and then also incorporate our town values. So another minor change we're recommending is we're proposing the board to consider nominations at the November board meeting, perhaps pause for a closed session to determine the winner at the November board meeting and then make that announcement. And this would just streamline the process a little bit, so nominees don't have to come back again for the December, at the December meeting for an announcement. So again, the policy's in your packets, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions?
I just have, I guess, a comment. Thank you so much for working on this. The police department has done something like this for a number of years, and I think it's awesome to recognize the employee with their name tag on a plate and then also with, with the plaque. Along with that, I, I like getting, doing, doing everything in November like that. I think that's great. I like it that we're recognizing not only the person that gets the Earl Murray Junior Employee of the Year award, but also each nominee from the department. With that being said, the, how you recognize the employee that you wish to, that you wish to nominate, I just have concern about the, the form that they're supposed to fill out with the matrix that's attached to it. I see employees that mainly are based in office, offices that have opportunity to be in a computer most of the day versus employees that really don't have that opportunity to, you know, they're check their email, they're gone.
Yeah.
I would like to see, and I don't, I haven't brought this up to the other commissioners, that, that you also accept just a basic email nomination process. Let them include in there what they want. I just see some employees having a chance to look down while they're filling out the form to check out the matrix and try to include the town values and stuff. Let them put it kind of in their own words about why they think the employee should, should be, should be the employee of the year. Again, it's not a, not a slight on the process about what you recommended, because it's awesome.
Yeah.
It really is. Just my comments on that. Thank you.
I think that's a valid point, and we could certainly incorporate email, and then also even, we, everybody pretty much checks their email, but if they're even more comfortable doing a paper form nomination, we could also do that as well for folks that don't necessarily sit in front of a computer all day.
And that was just my comment.
Sure. Yep.
I would agree with Mr. Brinkley. There are a lot of people that work out in the field all day, they're not in front of their computers, and when they get through working in the field all day, they're kind of ready to leave.
Yeah.
And not have to go back in and look at whole matrix and all that kind of stuff. A simple paper trail or email should be sufficient.
Sure. Yeah, but we can, we can certainly do that.
We need a motion. Yes, to approve the policy, and I, I don't know that we necessarily need to say as amended by our discussion, but I think we can.
Can I just say as presented?
Yes.
Make a motion, can we adopt the new policy for employee of the year process as presented?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just a, just a comment on, on that. One of the things I noticed about the proposed policy is that it calls for the department heads to present their nominees during the meeting, and that the board will then consider the nominees and select one at that same meeting.
Yes.
I'm not sure if it's clear that the nominee, that the nominations will be submitted to the board in advance, so you can consider them before they're actually presented in the meeting. Because I'm thinking it might be nice, as we've all seen, it's difficult to make the choice sometimes, and I think it may be useful to make sure that the board has the opportunity to review the nominees and the information supporting it in advance of the day that you're going to make the nomination. I'm just not clear if that's in the process. It may be.
Yeah, and the intent would be that the packet would be submitted with the nominations and the write-up, so you have a chance to pre-read, but the department heads would still present it at the board meeting.
I, I think that makes sense.
So it would be presented to the board by the Friday before a meeting, so that it would be same day as the agenda comes out?
Yeah, the nominations, you would have the paper nomination.
It'd be part of the agenda.
Okay.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Yep, that's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Good question. Brings us to an update on bulk collection. Nancy.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, commissioners. I would just like to, we started our bulk pickup on the 2nd of October, and it'll run through the 30th of April. We start at the north end of town, and they divided town up into four quadrants, and we started north end of town, go down the west side neighborhoods. The second quadrant starts at Soundside Road. The third quadrant will be down Old Oregon Inn Road, and the last quadrant will be in between the highways like Memorial and Wrightsville. When we make a sweep through, and we finish up all four, we'll start all over again, just keeps rotating around. Some of the bulk items that we pick up is all on the website that Karen Hagie and Roberta did a wonderful job putting together, so I'll briefly just hit some hot points. The trash that we, the bulk that we accept is like branches, excuse me, tree limbs, leaves, pine needles, any homeowner small project that's less than 144 square feet, which includes like flooring, cabinets, carpets, shingles, insulation, white goods, ovens, washer dryers, bicycles without tires. We do take lawn mowers, weed eaters, and blowers, but they must have the gas tank removed. We also take furniture, beds, mattress, box springs, hot tub covers and things like that. The only thing new this year, as far as the pickup leaves, they no longer have to be in a bag. Before it used to, they put it in a plastic bag, then they don't do that anymore. Then we accepted leaves in a paper bag. We don't do that anymore. So if you just put your leaves to the road, we'll pick it up. The other thing I'd like to say is sometimes people think we don't come by, we're not in their neighborhood, but we will be picking up metal, so we won't be picking up your mattress and putting it in your metal truck. So we'll be through there, just give us some time to come. And you can always call Public Works every day, they can tell you where the bulk pickup is and where they're at. Some of the things that we do not pick up is anything commercial, construction-wise, also like landscapers, cement, glass. The county does take a lot of stuff, so you would just need to call them. And like I said, a lot of this information is on the website. That's all I, do y'all have any questions?
To clarify, on the leaves and bags or yard debris and bags, is it my understanding that the county does not allow us to bring those to the, to the landfill?
Correct. We were allow, they were, last year, we were able to bring them in the bags, but it's not, I don't think it's just the county also, I think it's where they take it.
Okay, right. And I get that. I think probably a little bit of communication with the public. I mean, I know one of my neighbors has one of the paper bags out, everything else got picked up, the paper bags still lay in there. And, and I think that people just don't, you know, because of the history, I think people just kind of don't understand. kind of don't understand. I think perhaps we need to do a little bit of outreach.
I do know today, sanitation superintendent picked up some that were in bags, and we take them back to the brushyard and open them ourselves. So with that instance, it might have been the brush truck hadn't been through there, maybe it was just the metal of a C and D truck.
That's fine. I just think the larger issue of, you know, don't use the bags for that.
Yes, sir.
And what are you doing with all the leaves and debris stuff?
It's going to Dare County.
It is going to Dare County.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I, we just got two building excavating, what, four feet of material from our new Public Works site, and I hate to think that we're going to compact that material back down into the ground again. And not have, it's pretty expensive to get it out, we don't need to start that all over again.
Commissioner Sears?
No, great work. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
People are putting stuff out. I rode down the Beach Road last night, and it was a lot of stuff laying out on the side of the road already.
Yeah, it comes out quick.
It did, but they're on it.
While you're there, Nancy, the community cleanup day.
Yes, sir. I'd like to find my paper. I'd like to tell you all about the community cleanup day that Karen Hagie has put together. She's worked very hard on this, and she's done a great job. We're looking forward to having this. This will take place on the 28th of October. The rain date will be Saturday, November the 4th. We'll meet at Downey Park at 9:00 a.m. All the participants will receive a safety vest, vests, gloves, buckets, bags, and trash picker- upper. They can park at Downey Park, they can go to any of the beach accesses, they can go up and down Riceville or Memorial Avenue, they can go out on the beach. It's wherever anyone would like to go to pick up trash. We will meet back at Downey Park at 12:00 p.m. for a pizza lunch, and that will be fun. And then the community cleanup that we had in 2019 was a success. We had 70 participants that showed up, and this year, we're hoping for 100. We look forward to seeing everybody and hope you can all come out.
Thank you. Thank you, Nancy.
Any questions?
No, I love it. I'm just unfortunate I'm not going to be here, probably out of town, but I love the idea and look forward to it in the future. Thank you. That brings us to item K6, consideration of the Jockeys Ridge State Park MOU. Andy?
This is also an item that the board has been discussing for a while, most recently back, I believe, at the June meeting. We talked about the impending termination of the lease with Jockeys Ridge State Park for the Soundside access, and how we would want to maintain a working relationship moving forward. As the board remembers, we had a working group that had met for several months to talk about issues with the access, and they had sort of come up with a list of recommendations to move forward with. One of those would be to establish either a lease or an MOU with the state park to define what that relationship would be moving forward. And essentially, that's what the board had asked us to put together at the June meeting. And so we have attempted to do that. We wanted to show that to you in draft form now before it went any further. So essentially, what you have in your packet is what we have drafted with the input from Joey Greenwood, the superintendent, and I have shared that with the neighbors over in Soundside Road. We wanted to make sure that everybody was comfortable with the language before it went up any further in the state chain, since we know that that will take some time. So essentially, it tries to establish the common operating picture for the access, recognizing that, you know, five or 10 years from now, there could be change over on the board and staff, and we want to sort of document what the common operating picture of the access is, and also to define what our role is, which would be much more limited in the future, and what the state's role is, and how we can help each other. And so that's what this MOU is designed to do. It talks about the amenities at the access in terms of the scale and the scope. I mean, essentially, it's a 23 parking space parking lot with beach boardwalk and shower and toilet facilities. It's fairly limited, it's a neighborhood access as it's described. The MOU also talks about hours of operation that were established, which change depending on the time of the year. And it also talks about how the entrance would be maintained, and let's see, you know, daily maintenance and cleaning, how emergencies would be handled after hours, activities, events and groups, signage, how we would coordinate with the state if they proposed any future improvements, and law enforcement response. As I said, staff and the state are fairly comfortable with what's been put into print so far. I did receive comments from some of the neighbors that I think, obviously, there's frustration that has built up over the years with the access in terms of the growing demand for access and the volume of traffic that goes back there. And the town has certainly done a lot to try and mitigate some of these impacts with some of the traffic improvements we've made. We've put in radar signs, we've put in speed cushions, we've established new parking zones, we've increased our patrols, and additional signage as well. We've also limited commercial vehicles back there. So we've tried to be responsive to the neighborhood's concerns, and they certainly did acknowledge that when I spoke with them. However, I just think that, you know, addressing the overall volume and what's appropriate for that neighborhood is going to be a continuing concern of the neighborhood. And I know I've spoke to several of you about that as well. And one of the things the task force talked about was, you know, for an access that's trying to handle this volume of traffic, what is really the most appropriate way to do that? Is it to handle that through a small neighborhood access on a small-town street or in some other manner? And I think that's the question moving forward, is what's appropriate for Soundside access in the state park, if they're really trying to encourage Soundside access. And so I throw that to the board to discuss. Also, the draft MOU, we're certainly happy to make any changes before we send this back to the state and share those with the neighbors and continue to communicate as we can. So, thank you.
Thank you. Board, any, start with you, Commissioner Sanders. Any comments, questions?
23 parking places? And how many cars are we having back there a day?
I mean, I think there's been traffic counts, vehicle counts, up to 400 per day on a busy day in the summertime.
Is there any plans by the park to try to regulate? I mean, I see one of the conditions is the area outside the gate should remain clear of vehicles, and I know with 400 cars trying to get in 23 parking spaces, that's not always going to happen, so.
You know, in terms of actions that they're planning to take to regulate how many vehicles can go back there, I'm not aware of anything specific that they've talked about doing for that.
Commissioner Brinkley?
I like the MOU, I appreciate you getting the input from people back there on Soundside. I don't want them to think that we're abandoning them, but I don't know how we can do it strongly encourage. I don't think we can require them to, but I really think Jockeys Ridge State Park, if they're going to encourage, continue to push this access, and the use of it has just continually grown through the years, then they really need to find an alternative means to get to it, in my opinion. That street is already overwhelmed, and I just hope that they would try to continue to be good neighbors, continue to be good neighbors, and really actively seek an alternative way to get there. Thank you.
Okay.
I agree with the two previous commentators, but I also think that one of, and the MOU is fine, but I also think we need to talk to the Director of Parks about asking them to find an alternate access that comes through the park to get to their accesses. Not to try and circumvent the superintendent, but the Director of Parks needs to be involved.
Yes. Is that something that's helpful for me to be involved in, you think, making that?
I would say you could work with the manager, perhaps.
Okay, all right, thank you. We'll do that. Commissioner Sears?
I would echo those comments. I mean, it's growing, and it's going to continue to grow. It's a great location.
Yeah. Yeah, I think one of the other things we can do, I mean, I remember how things were under previous directors with the National Park Service and those relationships, and how they changed when Dave Alec came. I think the other conversation we can have is that, how we would like that role to be defined in terms of being more engaging of the surrounding community, you know, that it would be nice if that was part of the job description for that director. Do we need to do something formal here to approve this?
Make a motion to adopt the memorandum of understanding between the state and North Carolina?
Second.
Thank you. Motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I think at this point, we were going to push this language up to the state for further review. There could be additional changes that come out of that. So essentially, we're approving, moving this draft forward.
Yes. Okay, very good. Hearing no discussion, then all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Update on community survey results. Andy?
Okay, just one second. Okay, so this is obviously something that the board has been discussing for a while. We put a community survey out, a paper survey out to roughly 3,000 residents and property owners back in July, and it was an attempt to gather input on the direction of the town, as well as how well we're performing in some of our services, and try to gauge some of the priorities from our community. We have wrapped that up now, and we received 1,074 total responses to our random sample, which I believe is fairly good. And then we only got 62 responses to the open participation survey for a total of 1,136 responses. So, you know, just for the random sample, as I said, we sent out 3,000 and got 1,074, which is about 36% response rate, which, you know, just doing some cursory research, I think that's a fairly commendable response rate. And so we are on schedule to receive the draft report from our consultant on October 9th, which would be next week. And we plan to present that to you on November 1st at your board meeting, and it would be a fairly comprehensive presentation on the results of the survey. When we receive the report on the 9th, they're going to send it to us to review and make comments, and then provide any changes we ask for back to us. Once we have that sometime in mid to late October, I'll go ahead and forward that report to you, just so you can start reading it before the November meeting, and then we'll have the presentation in November. The board is also aware that we're working towards a strategic planning retreat in November, the 16th and 17th, utilizing a facilitator. And they're also going to put together a report on some findings from the survey to help with our retreat, and that's something that we had asked them to do. And the survey, while not the total breadth of discussion for our retreat, it would comprise a large portion of what we're going to talk about at the retreat. And so we are going to get that from our facilitator. Essentially, that's where we are. Things have gone well and gone on schedule, so more to come on that. Thank you.
Questions, comments? All right, thanks, Andy. We're really looking forward to seeing that. All right, so that brings us to the board of, no, the, I'm sorry, we did miss something, didn't we?
Yeah, Carolyn pointed out that there was a consolidated fee schedule amendment that was part of the precious metals item.
Yes.
And that if we could make a motion to adopt that.
Yes.
Make a motion that we adopt the consolidated fee schedule as related.
Second. A motion in a second. I don't think that needs discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. I remember seeing that when I reviewed the packet and then forgot it. All right, that brings us to the board of commissioners' agenda. I'll start with Commissioner Sanders.
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Brinkley?
Just very briefly, in the sight of time, thanks to the Police Department and their staff for an awesome, awesome event for National Night Out. Having been to every one of those since we started them 30 years ago, maybe, that was by far the largest, and y'all just did an outstanding job. The vendors that you brought in from the outside, the kids playing, the giveaways. My next-door neighbor's little boy won a bicycle, they couldn't put it in their car, so I brought it home to him, so he was excited about that. Last Friday, I had the privilege of going to Jockeys Ridge State Park for the Mountains to Sea Trail marker unveiling. If you haven't seen it, take some time to walk out there and look at it. It was homemade in a gentleman's garage in Cary, and how he did that, I'm not quite sure, and to get it here the way it looks, I mean, it's really, really, really awesome. The last thing is, I watched the County Board of Commissioners meeting this past Monday, in that I was really excited to hear the chairman ask for forming a task force for affordable housing. I think that it's awesome, and I commend him and his commissioners for pushing that forward, but also, I'm sorry?
Better late than never?
It is, and I'm trying to think positive and looking forward, and just hope that we can have something come out of that. And with that, something that Commissioner, County Commissioner Irvin Bateman said, was looking at alternatives to just, okay, here's $35 million, go get some low-income housing tax credits and build a house. Let's look at some other ways how we can incentivize a developer to come in, similar to like the teachers' housing. It's restricted, only teachers can be there. How can we do that? Or incentives that we can give our year-round residents that may have property they've converted into a short-term rental? What incentives can we give them to maybe come back to a year-round rental? But again, I'm very, very excited, and again, I appreciate the county manager for asking to form that task force. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just going to echo Commissioner Brinkley. The idea that he was talking about has been brought forward several times by Mayor Proton Sears, and I would almost given that, all the research that he's done, request almost that he be put on that housing task force. No offense, Mayor, but since he's done all the research, I'd like to, I said, not just the mayor, but have the Mayor Proton be part of that program.
I agree with that completely. Commissioner Sears?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. What? Sort of a continuing discussion in the mayor's agenda. As far as that task force, the County Board Chair has emailed all of the mayors. All of the mayors have weighed back in and said, yes, we would like to participate in that, so hopefully, we will see that task force staffed and come to fruition soon. Those are all questions, and I hope we'll begin with some problem definition about, you know, and some consensus about what it is we're actually trying to do with housing and who we're trying to house. And, you know, the County Board Chair has acknowledged, yes, it's late, but it's always time to do the right thing. So regarding the appropriations bill, you all know that week before last, I think maybe Tuesday afternoon, we all became aware of what was getting ready to go into the state budget, just a few days before it was scheduled to be voted on. The manager and I started talking to one another. The manager was talking to other town managers, I was talking to the other mayors, and we were able pretty quickly to build some consensus about town positions on this, that, as one other mayor said, and I agree, you know, if there's a hill that you're going to die on, it's when the legislature comes and starts telling you without any consultation, without any consideration, what you are going to do in certain categories. Yes, they give powers to the towns, but to sort of arbitrarily, quickly, without, sort of in the dark, without consideration or consultation, to take that kind of action, that is... that is, in my mind, and I, and our citizens and their response, you know, we can't focus on one site, we can't focus on one developer, we can't focus on, you know, what we really need to focus on and at least initially in the response is to push back hard on the legislature for that kind of action. And so we're in the process of doing that. The town's all adopted resolutions, letters, similar correspondence to ours with the county as well in terms of asking the county not to avail itself of this authority even if it were granted, and they've responded to that to some degree. Any other, Andy, any, anything else that you would add, sort of where we are, other than, you know, what we may discuss in closed session?
Yeah, other than, you know, the board had held a special meeting and to talk about the issue and the seriousness of it. And so there'll be ongoing communications with, you know, our board and the towns about taking some sort of collective action.
Yeah.
Mayor?
Commissioner Brinkley?
Well, as we go through the process to determine our actions, we also need to be aware that this may have been salvo one by the legislature, that there may be other special interests that are going and ask the legislature to overrule local ordinances as far as what they can do in the towns. And we all need to be very vigilant about the next session coming forward and ask our legislators to, don't blindside us.
Yes.
You know, special interests don't necessarily dominate our town. That's not always the best interest of our town to have special interest, asking the legislature for things such as building codes or building changes and so forth, being demanded in towns as it relates to housing.
And having been forewarned, you know, we all really need to be communicating with, with the league of municipalities. And, I mean, they're the folks who spend a lot of time in the legislature and, I mean, and we have. The response has been a little too quiet for me so far. And so I think, I think there needs to be a continuing conversation with them about Commissioner Sears, anything you would add? I do want to address, I mean, there've been some other sort of tangential things that've come up and I do feel compelled to address them today. If you watched the meeting and heard what Chairman, what Chairman Woodard said, a couple of things in his comments that struck me. One was, we tried to work with the towns. I'm not sure how you define work with the towns. They made direct approaches to the town of Manio. They made a direct approach of some kind to the town of Killable Hills. I'm not aware of any other direct approach they made to anybody about, or consultation with any town about how affordable housing might be, might be developed. And then he made the statement, he said for six months, the Nags Head mayor said this site was agreeable for their board, that it would be an approved site. Well, you all know that I don't ever speak in absolutes anyway, but for six months until it wasn't true, what I said was, if a developer proposes a multifamily project that complies with Nags Head rules and the appropriate zoning, then that project is likely to be approved. Well, you know, the town had concerns about multifamily housing and where it, where it might occur and that concern was bubbling and so action was taken on that front that we're all well aware of to address multifamily housing. And we continue to address that. And so whether a multifamily project could have been developed was true until it wasn't. And that was the extent of that conversation. And I certainly would never make any promises on behalf of the board. I know very well, nothing is true until this board determines that it's true and nothing is the case until the board has taken, taken appropriate action. As to transparency on my conversations with Woda Cooper in particular, I addressed that in the September meeting under the mayor's agenda last September, so that's on record. Anybody's welcome to go back. I gave a complete rundown of the conversations that I'd had with Woda Cooper up to that point. Since then, there've obviously been little to none because their project couldn't be done in the town of, in the town of Nags Head. I have not contracted with Woda Cooper, would not do that under, under any circumstances, have no, no relationship with them other than conversational. I always recuse myself when our firm is involved in projects before this board. You know that. I don't represent decisions for this board that haven't been made. And when I was not here at that key October meeting last year, I was on a long planned vacation in Italy. I was not recusing myself. So with that, if there's nothing else, then first I'll ask, before we get to the closed sessions, is there other business to come before the board? Okay, all right, then Mr. Leidy, you can, you can word this for us.
Yes, sir. So the board needs to enter a closed session for two reasons. The first is in order, I'm sorry, is pursuant to general statute 143-318.11a 3, in order to consult with the town attorney regarding matters within the attorney-client privilege and to preserve that privilege. And also to, pursuant to general statute 143-318.11a 6, I'm sorry, a 5, in order to discuss the potential acquisition of property or the interests in property located at 111 West Sea Chase Drive and 105 East, I'm sorry, West Sea Chase Drive.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, the board will be in closed session. All right, so the board has returned to open session. We'll note that Commissioner Brinkley has been excused. So Mr. Leidy, will you please report? And then there's an action to take.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the board did consult with the town attorney regarding matters within the attorney-client privilege and also discussed the potential acquisition of property and gave instructions to the town manager, but no other actions were taken.
Thank you. And so we do need to take action to amend a lease on a piece of property.
I make a motion to approve the amendment to the lease with Village Realty Holdings.
At 105 West Sea Chase.
At 105, West Sea Chase.
I second that.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on that item? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. We ask about any other business to come for the board? Andy?
No, sir.
Last shot. All right, then a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Motion to adjourn.
We may ask to adjourn to a mid-month meeting. I'm sorry.
Okay.
We are supposed to get bids back tomorrow on the Epstein Bath House.
Oh.
And so I would really rather not wait till November to approve that if we, if we don't have to.
Then know that. So a motion to recess to the mid-month meeting would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just point out, I will be in depositions in Charlotte on the 18th, but I'll see if Robert Hobbs or Lauren Warble can attend the meeting.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you.